The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before I go further, do we have anyone here who can make notes for our meeting this evening? This is our secretary and she's not here. You did that, John and Laura? Fantastic. Thank you, and I'll try to supplement.
Except when I'm not speaking.
Ditto. Okay then, we triumphed it, we'll give it a try. And I have a pen somewhere and we'll get started. So item number two, I need to get is comments from the public. Do we have comments from the public? Yes, Mr. Mandeville? So Adrian Mandeville, Foston Hill Road?
Yep. So unfortunately I can't stay, I gotta go get some water back on, but I wanted to stop and just kind of give you guys a couple of updates on some stuff. The school had let us know that you guys had a contract offer from Dime Oil and as we've told Eric, he's welcome to sign that. You guys sign a contract every year, so it's already competitively bid anyways and that number's better than the state offer generally, so we don't have a problem with that. That actually helps you guys, that's almost a $25,000 difference in that line item. Also, we did get, we're still waiting for, you know, something formally in writing, but the auditor has said that based on other towns that he has done for the finance position, that he believes it's about a two and a half day position for the budget director. He's figuring one day for the school for reporting and your budget requirements and one day for the town. And then a full-time bookkeeper slash accountant for the office, that would do the payroll and what have you. Money-wise, we should be budgeting between $120,000 and $130,000 for those two positions. The budget director would actually be a two and a half day position, basically. The other half day would take care of meetings and that type of stuff. And...
So remind me, two and a half days was...
Two and a half day for the budget director and a full-time...
No, but you said two and a half days was budget, one day was the school, one day was the town?
It's one day budget for each place, basically. Budget and, you know, payroll, or budget and, you know, contracts, for the school, it's a lot of, you guys do a lot of reporting?
Yes.
Right, so they have a lot of that type of stuff to do?
Right.
And for the town, it's actually more, we do have some report generation, but...
You're with me, I apologize. You said, I thought it was you...
One day, one day, and then you can have a half a day slotted for that person's work.
So two and a half days total is what the auditor was recommending?
Budget director, yes.
Thank you, I thought you were doing two and a half days, then one day, then one day. Thank you for the clarification. And then a full-time bookkeeper, accountant for the payroll and whatnot?
Right.
Thank you, okay.
Right, and about $130,000 for the two positions to be aligned, everything. With what, with what, you know, we'd be looking at.
Now, just to clarify, I need to do...
You, we being, sorry, we being board of management?
The town, no, yeah, combined.
Okay.
Then we could figure out how to slot it up, or basically we think it's okay.
So you've spoken with Eric or spoken with the town, representing the town, or...
I've told, I've told Eric.
Mm-hmm.
We're actually waiting for some other stuff to also come back from him.
Okay.
And when he comes in for his batch test day, we'll have further conversation regarding all of this.
Right.
Eric has reached out to some other towns to try to find out. Some other towns have full-time, but generally their full-time person is also their human resources person for everything. In that, in our case, that's not, that would be doing so.
So I've directed Eric, he's on my chair's roundtable to a button, he's supposed to be here, but he'll be here to a bunch of different towns, including Canton and Wilton and Basra, who all have financial departments in the town that incorporate the school's budget into that.
Our auditor actually audits a bunch of these towns.
Right, so that was good.
And his point was that it really depends on the specific job that you're asking that person to do.
Correct.
The bigger, the towns that dump HR on that person is when you generally need them more full-time.
Full-time, yes.
Also, if you, on much bigger towns that have, like, whether they have water, sewer, those types of services generate a lot more revenue and things like that that have to be addressed or categorized in different ways. They also, generally also need some type of investment vehicle for those in terms of funding and all that stuff. We don't really have any of that, so, in plan. The board of finance meeting last night, it was brought up by one of the folks in there that the budget that was currently posted on the website showed too large of an increase on the insurance, that Ram's insurance numbers were coming in something around 6% and you guys had something close to 11. So maybe somebody can just verify that.
Again, our budget, just to clarify on those two, you said that 120 to 130 was an all-in cost, including...
Yes, yeah, yeah, I mean, it, um, not sure how it would work, I believe it would fall under the town benefits, which would be, you know, work and what have you, but we can figure that out.
Yeah, so that was fact, part of it.
We believe it is, yeah. And, you know, if you want to say at this point, if you guys budget for that and there's a problem, you know, you're budgeting for half of that, you know, let's say you're, you know, 65, you budget for half, if it goes over that, we'll figure out how the town can pick it up until we sort it out. You know, I don't think that's an issue. The difference, okay. That's what I got. If you guys have questions on something else, I'm reachable by following us or text me, but unfortunately I gotta go get some water back on, so.
Thank you for your input.
Okay.
We're still on public comment, so does anybody else want to comment? Okay, great. Communications.
I just have one that's at your place, and it's Steve, us. He requested the person who needs some information that you're going to be receiving tonight. That's what's at your place.
And thank you, and I apologize, and thank you for getting that so quickly, I apologize. Obviously I've been out, except for about a month, so I appreciate you.
So let's go through it. And that's all I have for communications.
I don't have the minutes from the last meeting, do we have the minutes? Those were in the board packet and I didn't put them off, but I'm wondering, do we want to, I know we're not, especially we will, you can't add to it, but I know we can delete from it. Should we push that off till our March 11th meeting?
Um, you can, or we can give you a copy of...
Let's push it off till March 11th, because we don't have a, let's do that. Okay. So, chairperson's all over the floor. The shared services committee met on Tuesday night in this location. Sally was wonderful as far as providing us a copy of all of the contracts that the school has, and Steve and Dan and Jared were all there, so please chime in and add in. But Sally provided us on very short notice with all the contracts for the school and Eric Anderson is an ex officio member of the shared services committee, so we were speaking with Eric. He's gonna come up with a similar list so that the shared services committee can look at that and try to come up with actual services that the town and school can share more than we already do, which is a lot. But Sally then went through the list with us and explained them, thought it was very helpful. And you just heard, Dime Oil has been recommended, so that's wonderful. And anybody else want to share about shared? So I also at that meeting talked about what had happened that morning at the roundtable of all of the boards of education at CAE that morning and learned a lot at that meeting about, more about shared services that towns do with schools than about how schools are sharing inter-town, or intrudtown between educational services there. But came back and recommended that we look at sharing, somebody just said a human resources director, an IT director. They, many of the towns had created a finance department for the town to specifically address finances in schools. Some of them have already done what we've done, which is sharing the food services. So there are many different ways. And interestingly enough, at that board chairs roundtable, as I said, on Tuesday night, almost everybody who was in attendance was from a small town. There were very few, nobody was there, from Bridgeport, Hartford, West Hartford, Stanford, whatnot. So it was very interesting to be among board chairs and to really be able to share small-town information.
And I do have some copies of the handout from the...
If anybody wants that, Cindy would be the only one who doesn't already have it. Steve, Dan, Jared, anything to add from the shared services committee?
Justin, I think we kind of touched on it, that Eric was gonna go back and kind of do what we had asked, what Sally did for us, is what was him evaluating their contracts. And one of the other things that we're running into is gonna be whether we do want to combine any services. If we're in a contract and they're in a contract, it's trying to establish end dates so that when it comes time to negotiate, we're all on the same timeline, same page.
Sally?
We're gonna start with some information on outplacements for our special education and Holly Matarano, who is our special ed director, is going to present that.
Okay, so included in your packet were responses to some questions about shared transportation for outplacement and the concept of bringing students in from other districts, from other towns on a tuition-based basis. So we do have two students who are outplaced. One of them is in a clinical day treatment program and the other one is in another public school that does accept students with tuition. We did look at shared transportation and try to get the best cost. We looked at Eastcon, Daco, and I think First Student, and there was a huge disparity. We were able to get Eastcon for $90 a day compared to about $250 from Daco. So we went with Eastcon giving us the best price. I did contact the day treatment program and Eastcon to find out if there were students from any other town in proximity to us that we could share the cost of the van, and at the current time, there are not. But certainly, should that change, we would opt to, you know, share the cost with another district. I had given a handout, and I don't know if there's anybody that did not get this, what we approximated the cost would be if we were to start our own program.
The $395,000?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, you gave them to us at the...
But I didn't know if there was anybody...
You don't have, we'll just pass it around.
For transportation, is it cheaper for Eastcon because we have other services with them? So if we paired that back, would it go up?
No, that's, they're straight-up costs per day, yeah.
Yep. So yes, that cost was about $381,000 and it would be pretty much new staffing, with the exception of some related services that we would take a piece of those who are currently employed here. I did explore with four other districts, Marlboro, Hebron, Columbia, and Fulton, if we were to have our own program, would they consider sending students on a tuition basis? And they all said they would consider it. It would depend on the nature of the program, how well-designed and developed it was, but that they were, it would take some convincing, particularly to parents, that it was a well-planned, mindful program. I did check with another district, well, the district in which we have sent a student. I believe it's not cost-effective to a small district like us because we don't have enough students to make it worth it. That district has 10 students in their program getting ABA services. So therefore, for them, it makes sense to have their own program rather than pay all that tuition out of district. Even if we had the startup cost of the $381,000 and accepted students on a tuition pay basis, that fluctuates. It depends on the kids in a particular town. If we counted on that revenue and a student moved out of another district, then we've lost that revenue, so it's no guarantee that we would be able to make it cost-effective for us. And the nature of special ed is that other districts may have students, for instance, a student who's hearing impaired and uses sign language, that student's not gonna fit into a behavior disorder program. A student in a wheelchair, non-verbal, needing discreet trial instruction, not gonna fit. So the nature of special ed students is so diverse, it's hard to say, okay, start up a program, we ask for tuition-based students, but they're not all gonna have the same needs and therefore we're kind of stuck with not having the revenue to support what we would have put into it and to make up the difference.
At the CAE three legislative breakfast, Holly, there was a discussion about a program, I believe, that's being done in Ellington. Their superintendent or principal, but I believe it's at the high school level. It's just something I mentioned, and he was specifically talking about their having created a special education program kind of for the region or for the area. I wasn't able yet to follow up with him, and we discussed that at the chairs roundtable also. So I encouraged CAE and I think Bob Raider's gonna start to do this, to have a regional meeting of our board chairs instead of a statewide meeting so that we're learning a lot more rather than just at a legislative breakfast. But I, outplacement was another huge issue that we talked about at the chairs roundtable. Canton, in fact, just had five students outplaced in the last month, which to their budget and to our budget were very similar. So she was talking about $500,000 and that would be very similar to what we're seeing. And the other thing that was mentioned is just a significant increase in, not how we would typically define a special needs student in 20 years ago, but more the emotional, social, and mental health issues that are coming about and requiring outplacement.
Right.
And that being really becoming more than, you know, how it would have been defined 20 or 30 years ago. And they're being, they're needing to address that.
Yes, I attend a monthly con case meeting, which is area special ed directors in our region. And there is a lot of increase, as spoken, in terms of younger children with social and emotional needs. You know, explosive behaviors, violent, aggressive behaviors. But that seems to be coming more common.
Yep.
And that's certainly a concern because that is not the type of population we are used to having to deal with. It's usually been teenagers, adolescents, that kind of thing.
So yes, you mentioned specifically that there were kindergartners and some of those five students who had been recently outplaced. And it was very difficult to find a program that would address their needs.
Yes.
Because the school was not able to.
With the projected cost that I've given out, there was something missing, which I found from the district that we're tuitioning to, and that is that they have a continuous consultation from Eastcon for their program. And they do fidelity checks and supervise and give feedback. And that was an expense that I had not included in my projection.
Called continuous?
They do fidelity checks, meaning is the program being delivered as it was designed? Is data being collected and charted? And are there ongoing meetings to assure that it is operating in the way that it was designed? This is the fifth year of the program.
Yeah, they, they were involved heavily in establishing the program. They consulted with them to put that program together in place. And just to clarify one thing, Holly said the 10 students you referred to, those 10 students are in a K to two building. There's another building, a three to five building where there are other students, so it's 10 students in a K to two building.
And where is that located?
Can we say?
I think we can say where the building is, and we're not, if they're finding any students. If it can't, then don't say it.
And there are four at the three to five level as of this time. So really taking a look at a district's numbers compared to ours, 14 kids.
Yeah. Any more questions of Holly, though?
Actually, I have one for Sally on the same similar thing. I was just going back through some other things. Hey Sally, you're very bored, obviously, you're being sick, so I read a bunch of the old minutes and at one moment you were involved in an Eastcon school district collaboration group that was, at the time, I guess, talking about exactly what we're kind of talking about. Is that still active? Did anything come of that, or have they...
Well, there's still a lot of regional discussions and meetings, but it really, as Holly said, that's what's not on this. So there really isn't anything that developed from all of that.
Actually, one thing I should have mentioned, the Eastcon transportation came as a result several years ago, where Eastcon sent out a questionnaire, a survey of districts and said, if we were to regionalize transportation, is that something you would be interested in? And the responses generated their transportation.
So they do, they're planning on continuing it and everything is...
I'm glad that you brought that up. So you were on this Eastcon board?
It was a committee.
Can you explain a little bit of that?
Yeah.
Can you explain a little bit of the...
We looked at the time...
Oh, the committee that you were on and what you guys were trying to do?
And it was several years ago. You know, we looked at all kinds of shared services, special education, unique positions like reading consultants or OT, PT, all of those kinds of services. And what we found is that most districts really wanted, they wanted to do things themselves. They wanted to combine with maybe their neighbor or something else.
So is that why there was a little bit of push to go furthermore with Eastcon here over the years that you've been here?
Well, initially, we, you know, we did all of those things with them, but that has evolved really now into mostly technology services. And so we do provide, we get our services from Eastcon primarily, by tech services.
Did you have any questions, Jan?
Not yet.
Holly, I was gonna ask you, when we spread out the services as a co-venture between the two buildings, does that necessarily take a higher expense for the program?
For the what?
Does it necessarily take a higher expense for the program, if you're splitting a program?
They each have staff, a separate staffing.
So you were doubling this?
She's not...
No, I know, she's in the program.
Yes.
And now, and now that program is migrating up into the middle school and high school because it's following the kids through the grades?
I see.
And so we're moving on into budget discussion. And I do have a handout for you, kind of give you some table of contents for direction. This is additional information that was requested. So we're going to show you, point out, you have most of this at your place, exactly what things we were able to pull together. We just got this, so I can guarantee it 100%, but it's very close to that. And so Laura is going to chime in, and a lot of this is actually at your place, but you have documentation in front of you. So I'll let Laura start with the budgets for the last three years. I think there's a question.
So there's a attach that 1516, 1617, and the 1718. The original budget on each of those is the same as the superintendent's budget. Back then, over those years, what we presented was, it was a document, there was no changes. And it also will show you what was actually expected against this budget. So the first page is something you're familiar with, is the very high level based on projects and that kind of is sorted by object, but there's more detail to support this on that first page.
And I did kind of mark your handout with what attachments we're talking about as we work through this list. So there's one for whatever it is, so I'll kind of give you a little bit of guidance in terms of the documents, because I realize there's a lot of, a lot of stuff.
So that's the first attach. The request was actually broken into two separate requests, but we're able to combine them. Moving down, the other request was for an attachment that was in November 2016 regarding technology. And so that one looks like this. This was actually a presentation that was done by Eastcon for staff, administrative staff, where they, this is when they first came in and evaluated what we had in place, what we were doing, what we needed to get up to standards, to speed, what they could do to replace the employee that we had. And basically to move us forward. So this was the attachment to those units. And this is, and this is the presentation.
And to add to that, it's on in your packet. At that point two in November of 16, we did a cost comparison, with the pass out of the network manager position that we had at the time versus the services that we were going to be receiving from Eastcon. To get a sense of the cost difference that we looked at. So at that point, there was savings between the current network manager versus what we were able to do via Eastcon.
Were there any other vendors that you guys considered in the pipeline?
Actually, yes.
Yeah.
They interviewed two?
Yeah.
Yeah, two.
Still working?
Don't be quiet.
I cannot remember the name of the second one, but we could find it. And they, and the second one did a lot of work in schools as well. They had school contracts as well. Similar capability, similar job description in terms of having a, an oversight on our technology, but only having somebody like come to the building once or twice a week. It was kind of laid out, it was laid out the same way, it was the same basic format. That's kind of how they did it. They had a staff of people that they would distribute among different towns and different schools and... I think they also, they also did municipalities. So the cost range is $650 per day, and right now we're doing two days. Where, where, what's that number right now?
We're a day and a half, actually.
For IT services? A day and a half, but, so at $650 a day, what is it, so we still, and that was seven?
She's looking, she...
Okay. Sorry, you were looking, I thought maybe... I can't believe you don't have that number on top of your head.
She's got 47.
So right, it's, it's not as clear-cut as that. So we get a cheaper rate if we contract for more days. So if we cut back, the per-day cost is most likely gonna go up. So when we get to it, in your handout is our current contract with Eastcon. So they do spell out a rate of 875 a day, but that's not necessarily what we're paying. I think we'd be 875 is if we had some kind of emergency or something that's not included in our current...
So I'm looking at the handout we got last night at shared services and on Eastcon IT services is $50,000. And as we discussed last night, Ram just hired somebody for two and a half days at $23,000 per year.
So it would be interesting to see what the job description is for that person at Ram and what they're doing versus what we're getting from Eastcon. So I'm not sure if that will accomplish without seeing that. I know other schools will hire somebody to do some kind of routine stuff with Eastcon. We're getting, which you'll see in the contract, white school resources.
The wage check and see... The wage check and see.
Without seeing that job description, I can't.
I would appreciate that, especially.
And we still have some of the services being covered by Mrs. Frazier, I think, right? Some of the IT services.
Yeah.
Covered in this.
Absolutely, yes.
And the next request, um, that's in your packet was for the contracts for the current administration. We kind of had support and business manager, you know, those in this hall. Attachment three in your packet. You want to look at those now, come back, finish the list, and then figure out.
Okay, continue to go, because I'm running out of time.
Yeah.
We can come back and sit and discuss this, but.
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
Bring it up.
Um, and so the next request, which is your attachment four, um, and this was actually something that the board has seen before, uh, from February fifth. Um, and this was, um, again regarding outplace student costs. Yes, and probably just gave us around here maybe. You've just got it seven minutes ago, okay. Yes.
What is our current cost for the school, the school, the school psychologist here?
Holly, do you have anything to do?
How, how to tuck my head, I do not. Do I have that?
Yeah.
You got it, that's good.
Let's see my tab.
So it's um, twelve thirty-five thousand.
What's that?
Thirty thousand.
For how many days a week?
That I don't know.
Two.
Thank you.
Two full days?
Yeah.
Yes.
Is that also through EastCon?
No, that's a contracted services that we contract directly with no benefits.
And then the next item, um, which is number five, this is just a list. Uh, first of all, kind of a table of contents of the contracts that we have. And those contracts are in the little packet there, so um, these are the things that we currently contract for out of, out of your district. And again, those contracts are for all of you. And then you also have um current contracts that we gave you for um several other contract, whatever we can find that we thought that you might be interested in seeing.
Well, this is where Steve had asked specifically for EastCon and that.
Yes. Yeah, so that's the first packet. And then the other ones are, that you have in here are GATCO, which is our transportation contract. And um, I believe, that's it. You put food services at our place, is that right? Oh, yes, and I gave you food services.
Oh, you really have a copy of that?
Yeah, can we, can we?
Okay.
Um, can we just go to the finance um contract here? I noticed in previous budgets, I believe around two thousand fifteen, that the finance, um, finance person was on a separate line under, under salaries, but is now tied into administration. Uh, what was the reason for removing that? And can we have a breakdown of those numbers?
Those are contracts, isn't it?
Yeah, I think they're in there.
Yeah, this contract is from two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen. So what I'm asking is for the current breakdown of salaries because you, you can't see individually in the budget currently. And it used to be, it's on a separate, on a separate online item.
So we actually kind of do break that down when we start looking at functions. So if you want, I can do a search of that right now.
Why, why was that mixed in with the rest of the administration? Over the years?
It was um, more of a judgment call on the level of the position. Uh, in the past, it was more of a bookkeeping position.
Yeah, I'm not really following that. This is why would me, I'm following with.
I mean, it's either whether it got lumped in there or it got lumped into um support services, like with the stove, one or.
So why, why would it just not remain its own line?
Well, it is in its own line in that function. So if you give me half a second, or maybe more than half a second.
Okay, that was a.
I can break that, that one, thank you. So the superintendent in the proposed budget is at eighty-six. The um principal is at one thirty-eight. And the finance is at seventy-five-four. So that should equal under administrative salary, it's at two ninety-nine four.
Was there any, I'm sorry.
No, wait, wait, it's still coming back, I'm sorry. Uh, just to verify, because I'm, I'm not always like the difference, I'm gonna make sure. Eighty-six, one seventy-four, eight is seventy-five-four.
Sorry, eighty-six, one thirty-eight.
One thirty-eight.
Seventy-five-four.
That's two ninety-four-four. Oh, eighty-six, I had eighty-one, so that's two ninety-nine-four?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great.
So in a contract provided to us, and the salary is sixty-five.
I believe that's the contractor's.
Right, I, I, I don't know. So that was an additional ten grand in five years. Was there additional duties or anything taken on that would explain an additional ten grand?
I'll have to get the contract.
That's the food services, right?
Food services, yes.
Job description that's included, that based off, that was current. That's the current job description. Yeah.
Basically, yes, I think it was in this packet review.
Yeah, and you know, I saw in fact, I just want to make sure because that the contract is there. Job description, job description is what we're currently.
How about this, instead of scrambling, that's.
So it's, it's in the last page of what we were given. Um, is the sixty-four, eight thirty is the salary. Thirteen nine fifty-five is reimbursement for insurance. Four ninety-seven is a per being.
Where are you seeing this?
On the very last page of the contracts that were handed out to us in this packet, employment agreement.
Yep, on number three, correct?
Yes, look at the very last page.
My last page on that package.
Okay, okay.
There's something else. So I, I.
Number three, this is on, so you got employment agreement between Edward School District and school business manager?
Okay, in, in, instead of flipping around and, and trying to find these numbers, I'm trying to understand why I was given a job description from two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen. There's a ten grand raise. I mean, can, can I just get a current copy of the, of the job description? Of what this all includes, I don't.
No, that isn't it.
So why were we given the one that's five years old?
Well, that's.
Except the contract we signed in the.
Real thing's changed, maybe it's up to the old that they, that's the answer.
So then why is, so why, so why is it sixty-five here and then the seventy-five here?
Because there's been increases, which the board has approved, and they averaged about the same as what everybody else was getting.
Right, yeah.
And that, and that all adds up to.
That everyone else, was, so what, all the other teachers and stuff, uh, were getting? So they have gotten the ten grand in the raises over.
The raises were between two and a half to three percent each year.
Do you have documentation on that, please? And I can wait until a while later and move on if you would like to, but.
Oh, I don't have it right now.
The, so the teacher contracts.
Because I was just told that it didn't change, but it, it did change, right? Someone over here just said, well, it didn't change.
The contract is what was signed, but the, the new contract was not signed every year.
Right.
The job is continued.
Right, I'm not talking, no, job description.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
I'm talking about.
The contract is in.
The contract was written.
Are you speaking again?
Trying, yeah. So I, I think, I mean, I think you're just looking to make sure, like, as we go from, at one point, this was sixty-three, and then started with seventy, sixty-five, how we got to seventy-five-four over the course of seven, four years. And what, I guess one question I did have, because I've had conversations. So one of the things that did change in the past four, few years in that administrative side was the loss of a vice principal, who had a number of responsibilities, which obviously schools still had to function. So where did all of those responsibilities go? Who did, who's picked those up? How much of those have become contractual services? Versus how much are being handled, and is there any opportunity? And I think we're gonna talk about this later as we talk about kind of administration. What can we bring in-house, and maybe reduce some contracts? Yeah. Yeah. I apologize, and I can bear with the voice, I'm trying, I got cough drops, sir.
I can, I can hear you perfectly too. Um, so basically, when it was an assistant principal, that person was responsible for all the special ed. Their job was actually assistant principal and director of special education. They were also responsible for the preschool program, overseeing the preschool program as a preschool administrator. And lastly, they split, shared the responsibility for supervision and oversight of the teaching staff. So that included teacher evaluations, um, the things that, that we had to do on administrative level. So, and we would split, we would split the staff in half for that, for that work. So when it was decided to divide that up within the organization, I took on all the teacher evaluation part. So that was double the evaluation, number of evaluations, and I took on the preschool administrator role. In addition to that, staying in preschool for the moment, we had a school readiness liaison already that we were using, who was being compensated through some of the school readiness funds in a small amount, uh, to the tune of about five thousand dollars a year. And we brought that person in on more of a per being basis to help support the preschool admin. And this was leading up into a time when we were going to be going into accreditation, which I'll talk more about in a second. So that was sort of addressing the preschool need and addressing the teacher supervision need. We still had the special ed. Holly, who has been a school principal and special ed director in other districts, had retired, and she was available on a part-time basis. And we started, and you can help me with this, did we start one day or one and a half day originally?
One and a half.
One and a half. We started one and a half days per week with Holly, again, on a per being basis to cover all of the special ed. So she facilitated all of the PPTs, she did all the reports, and she was our point person for all, all things special ed. And I'll let you, I'll let you add to that in a second. And then last year, there was a period of time when we had a slightly increased need for a period of time in terms of um evaluations, reports, and meetings, and things like that. And she was working for a little while last year for two days a week. Um, but she's back to one and a half days a week, uh, pretty much this whole year so far. But you want to talk about some of your other responsibilities, or some of the other things that you've kind of tackled while you've been here?
Well, it includes supervision of special education at the preschool level, so just the special ed case, um, state reporting, our IDEA grant for preschool, and um K through six, um, you know, supervision of all of the reports that come in from evaluations for identified students, determining eligibility, that kind of thing.
Is that also the vice principal was?
Exactly, so everything I just described, yeah. And so that's, that's kind of where, how it got formed, yeah.
So the three roles we're looking down into, Holly, which doing the IDEA grant, and then the one and a half to two days, which.
Yeah, one and a half.
And John is not a responsibility for.
Uh, all the administration.
As a special ed director.
And then also as a preschool director. Uh, you've taken the responsibilities and then, is Marilyn?
Yes, correct.
Is taking on.
The school readiness liaison, yeah.
And that's varied from, I believe the budget for this year was thirty thousand, and last year was closer to forty or fifty.
That's right. That's right, um, we have reduced.
Five thousand of that was paid for by our grant.
Correct, that's correct. Last year was the year that we went through our accreditation, and it was extremely labor intensive.
Deniak.
Just Deniak accreditation. And it was extremely labor intensive. You can ask any of the preschool teachers that are over, over sitting here tonight. And she helped us through that process, and she, she helped us through that process.
However, I know the previous one, from again, just looking at the minutes, it looked like it was Donna, if I'm correct, was vice principal. And.
Dawn, there was Suzanne.
There was Suzanne.
For Suzanne. And then it was Dawn Davis.
Dawn Davis.
Mm-hmm.
Previous, so the previous Deniak accreditation. It had been done by Dawn with the assistance of one of the, one of the pre-K teachers.
Lastly.
Are the pre-K teachers still assisting with that, or was it Marilyn doing all?
Oh, no, Marilyn didn't do all of it. The, the preschool teachers played an integral role in, in uh many aspects because they had to prepare their own portfolios, cluster portfolios that were going to be reviewed. They had tremendous involvement in, you know, establishing the classrooms and meeting all the guidelines that Deniak requires us. There's a lot, a lot of hoops and hurls.
It looks like, yeah, that's.
We spent a lot of time last year just strictly dedicated to making sure we.
And so you were also assisting in that accreditation, so.
I've seen it, yes.
It was you, Marilyn, and both pre-K teachers.
It was actually three teachers last year.
Oh, three, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah. And, and Danny Kane in the office played a critical role.
So when that maxed out, so that was about fifty there. So on what, because one of the things I just look at and, you know, but as we go forward, so, and Marilyn's obviously, I don't understand, she's a lot. I know personally Holly's done a great job with us, but we're looking at, that's eighty-five thousand dollars. We eliminated a position. And the vice principal, it doesn't make sense. Do we eliminate a position and now we're contracting out more than what it cost if we had had that position in-house? Or have somebody maybe, if the supervision and oversight is still able to be handled by John at this point, can we? uh, by John at this point, can we bring in somebody who's not an administrator, that can do pre-K and, uh, special ed and be here? You know, four days of juggle, what have you, and at the, and at less than eighty-five thousand dollars. So that's something to, I'd like to find out, I don't know, I mean, I see, I don't understand all the requirements, reach position, I think it's something we should explore, just obviously anything we can do in-house and reduce costs.
To a new position.
A new position, or to add, as we look at, you know, we're, we're having, um, again, I missed, uh, but we know that you're going to be retiring, which is going to leave us with a lot of, you know, with some new things that we gotta try and navigate, and one of those, as we look to how to fill that position, is do we increase the role or responsibility of the person that takes that position? To possibly put it back into an administrator's hands and say, okay, well, if, um, and correct me if I'm wrong, Sally, your current, well, it's two and a half days a week?
Yes.
You know, do we, and Shannon just mentioned, you know, how many applicants are we gonna get at two and a half days a week? Can we make it three and a half? Can we make it four? And absorb some of the contracted services, ask them to do those, increase the salary, but in net, net save some money and bring everything back in-house as opposed to contract. I'm gonna need about five minutes, give me my respect.
We'll need.
Uh, yeah.
Okay. And just to answer your question, I've already got two people who are interested in superintendent position for two point five days. So we, we should be okay.
Oh, okay, there, it's filled, there's a way to save money from the.
Yeah, determine that. Well, before we do anything, we have to determine, what are we going to advertise as the job description?
How we have a. And that's what I think, what, before we hire, you know, find out if we can add fifteen thousand to the role and save a thirty-five thousand dollar outplacement.
Yeah.
It totally makes sense.
Negative.
So I'm gonna go back for a second, 'cause I just feel like I was not led the wrong way, but kind of just people said they didn't understand what I was trying to say. What I was trying to say was, what we were provided was your salary from two thousand fifteen, right? The current breakdown is more than that by ten grand, right? So what I'm saying is, why was there that increase over those five years? If it was to match the teachers, I would like to see that increase. And I don't know how job description got pulled into it and it hasn't changed, but what has changed is her salary. So I'm looking as to why that did change and why I was given her contract, including her pay, from two thousand fifteen and not a current one, unless her contract hasn't been renewed since then.
It's been renewed every year, and what I'm saying is, what we, what, what is in your package somewhere, is at least your contract from twenty eighteen.
So, right, so.
And actually, this is all what there has ever been, this last page in here.
Right.
And this was the agreement, and you can see that, you know, different years, there was, uh, an increase that was initialed, I worked there. So, this is the contract.
Um, I'm just trying to feel.
So, I, you know, I just did a calculation, and if Sally got what on average the teachers got, which is a two point five percent increase every year for the last five years, that's an eight thousand dollar increase to just her salary.
Right.
And then if you add in the additional cost of benefits in the per diem, that would, I think, account for, sure saying it's a ten thousand dollar difference.
So that's what I, so, so, we, it is confirmed, I can see somewhere that that is what the teachers got.
They have a contract, this is a three-year contract, and you can see the contract.
And that's just four, I think. Four years, it's.
Oh, we did four years, so we, we did it, yes, so we did staggered, so, because we did three contract negotiations amongst them, so, yes.
Yes.
Right, so I, I don't wanna go off the assumption that that's, that it matches what.
Don't go off the assumption, look at the contract. And over a four-year period of time, one year it was lesser, the next year it was more than two point five percent, but I believe on average, what we averaged was two point five percent. Is that accurate?
Right, I understand that the different contracts, and how contracts work, what I'm saying.
I'm not saying contracts, I'm saying per year, it wasn't two point five.
I don't understand why.
It wasn't two point five percent every year then.
Okay.
So, what I'm saying is, over the contract period of time, the average was two point five percent. One year it was less than two point five, and other years it was more than two point five. And that's the contract per year that was negotiated over a four-year period of time with the teachers, which is the average increase that we gave to Sally, I believe Laura was also in that consideration, John and Diane.
So it doesn't match it, it doesn't match the teachers'.
Exactly.
But it's in there.
It matches the average of the four years. And yes, you can see that contract, it's a public document, I think we all have copies of.
Yeah, I'll, so I can take that, I mean, now I will look at it, thank you.
Um, and the next item on the request list were four simple minutes, um, two thousand eight.
I'd like to clarify that on that request. It wasn't a, it wasn't a request for those minutes, it was to point out whether it goes to you or whoever the webmaster is, that those links were all broken on the website. It didn't work.
Okay, so they were on the website?
They, they, it showed, there's a hyperlink, but when you click it, it goes to nothing, so I wanted to make sure that.
Yes, yes, yes. Yes, so we should just remove that.
Either remove it or update it, you know, 'cause there were some current ones, you know, January twenty twenty.
Yeah, sure, yeah, yeah.
Just, they're, they're not working, we need to address it with our Eastcon or whoever.
So, I know that Diane, above her desk, has booklets, and I, I believe they go back at least right now to two thousand eight. And so if in fact those links are broken, then that would just involve potentially Diane scanning the minutes um, during those time and, and making it available again, the site, that's what we're supposed to.
Yeah, I wasn't sure whether it could, what, I was going through everything, I figured, you know, hey, we found these don't work, we should, somebody needs to.
Oh, sure. Absolutely. But I'm just saying, if you need those and you wanna see those, Steve, Diane has a copy of every single one of those.
Absolutely, when, when we inquired about why they were no longer accessible, this was the answer we got. Anything older than two thousand fifteen, um, she just removed because they pointed back to the old website, which doesn't exist anymore.
Yeah, I know, I got it, but you go to that last one.
And she said, if you would like the older minutes to be on the new site, I can put them up, I just need them in a Word format or a PDF format, and then it could be reprinted, so if we think.
Will you just put it in a PDF format, if that's how we work with the Bible, we can.
Yeah, if, so if we think that we wanna do that, that would be like a summer project.
Yeah, what I would like in the interim though, is to remove the website.
Yeah, let's, we're gonna do that, okay.
And then have them, over the summer, we can update it, but just don't have broken links on the website if we know that it exists.
And then just really kind of the same thing we mentioned, that all of the minutes are revealed.
In the odds.
Yep.
Um, look, what can be on it would be if we can have at least the eighteen and twenty, those two that I kind of pointed out, the more recent minutes, 'cause I can see somebody from the January twenty twenty, that link's not working. So if we can have her, like, that should be put up.
So are you saying, what years?
This year.
Just.
There's a, there is one from January eighth, it's.
How much were you paying for this website?
Well, I don't know, Dan, if it's the website, or, you know, who's to blame here, but we can certainly clarify it and certainly fix it. The websites work very well for us, and it allows us to put a lot of information out to our community. Um, but January twenty, January eighth, you said, is not.
Yeah, I just don't check it, so, yeah, it just comes up with nothing.
Okay.
So January, the, on that attachment was, on my ridiculously long email, there's like three or four from the current, kind of current segment that are missing. Those ones, if we can get those up there, I think that would be, be two thousand eight to two thousand fourteen, and we need to rush. Yeah. And we'll get them up there over the summer, we'll give you some summer reading. Good for you.
You want the twenty twenty minutes, tonight?
The January twenty twenty, if we have enough. I'm not surprised, I just kind of, just to try and catch it, especially if I, just 'cause I, I miss that one.
So I think the other things, though, Steve, that were on your list, um, you have.
Yeah, and it's.
Yes, okay, yes.
So. I'm looking at the reference.
We've got the head up, Holly, um, please copy your contract. And then all the other contracts are also addressed. Eastcon.co, um, we pay social work services, but that's really kind of a, but that's really as needed cases.
So.
We don't have a separate contingency line, our contingency is built into the budget?
Yeah, well, actually, and Laura talked about that at the last meeting, that that amount really has been taken out, that was the one of the first budget reductions that we made. We do not have a separate contingency line, you know, it's a contingency so much. There's some that's just built in, um, we, we never know, obviously, exactly what the cost would be, but that was all removed from that hundred thousand dollars that we gave in the last year.
Uh, and this one here?
Yes, so it's the ninety-six, I think it's the first item on there.
Non-salary benefits reduction.
Yeah, so I made it, the left field everything, and if I couldn't identify it, I took it out, so there was money, extra money in there for possible elevator breaking down for that. It was in there now, just. So when I do the budget, I mentioned, I, I look at history, the same kind of what we're spending, put that money in there, whether we'll spend it or not, I've been, I've got these gaps, so you know, there's extra money in there for the HVA teachers, there's extra money in there for fire protection. So, again, I put, there was extra money in there for, um, the radios, which are just starting to show some deterioration, but, um, I took it out. So, if I couldn't identify it as something we had to have, I took it out. And it's broken up into, um, several lines. And that's all of the ninety-six, that did not affect any, um, personnel. I reduced the supply closet. So any, anything I could find that I couldn't actually identify, is how I can.
Were you able to add back in the Title IV? Title IV grant, the ten thousand for Title IV originally, it wasn't budgeted, included.
Um, we have to, when we apply for the Title IV, um, first of all, the grants are not, uh, get, uh, now I'm a creature mixed up, so plant versus.
Right, can't supply.
Yeah, so you can't take something you've already planned on doing and apply it to the grant. So usually we try to look at things we wouldn't have done. So Title, and I'm sorry, Title IV, when we apply for that, we have to pretty specific identify what we're doing with it, and it's usually.
What did we do with last year's? 'Cause I know since, we've had it a number of years, right?
And we never know if we're gonna get it, um, so it's not one of the grants I listed as knowing what we're gonna get next year, 'cause every year we have to fly foot. Um, we had the, um, STEM lab come in.
Yeah, well, the STEM lab.
And we pay for that. Um, this year we're using it for, um, classroom support, um, services. Um, some of the other kinds of things.
After school clubs.
After school clubs and the transportation, yeah. And we increased, um, one year, we increased the number of different after, week, after school clubs we were doing, so we were able to pay for the staff out of that. And we ran the night classes.
With the two outplacements we currently have, are we going to be eligible also for the excess cost grant this year?
So excess cost grant is, um, to get any money out of that, the cost of those, um, kids individually have to be four and a half times your student cost, so our student cost is at twenty-three and change.
I thought when I read that, that was based off, that was one where we actually benefited from rent, 'cause that's based off of the state, what the state lists for NCEP. It says, so we get to use the twenty thousand number in that case, as opposed to our twenty-three.
Okay, so whatever that number is.
Twenty thousand five hundred.
Yep.
Um, we have to exceed four and a half times that.
So ninety-two thousand three hundred dollars.
And we don't. And then if we did exceed it, we would get seventy-eight percent of that excess. So, one, we don't exceed it, so we're not gonna get anything.
Yeah, that's, I was, I thought we were over a hundred.
Yeah, I agree. I thought.
We had budgeted a hundred, but the actual contract came in for less. When we first, when we first knew we were gonna outplace, we stuck a hundred thousand on there, but when we actually, um, determined what the services that child is gonna need, it came in at eighty-six, and the transportation came way less, because.
But there's a second outplacement, right?
There's a second one, yes, and they're holding it part year.
But it's part year, they have to do each grant, that one for each student, so he's not gonna get the four and a half for this year. Now, are we anticipating both of those being outplaced next year?
So we budgeted only for one.
The second outplacement.
We don't.
We're only budgeting for one in hopes that they come back, so.
Yeah. Don't count for sure. So, you know, again.
Um, looking at the, and I apologize, I'm not sure exactly which meeting it came in, one of them, so I wasn't here. The staff twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one non-salary benefit budget reduction recommendations, sorry, that's a tie. One of the attachments, you know, I see, like, we're cutting, like, recommended, so budget reductions from the January eighth proposal. Uh, there's a couple line items where English language arts, we go from like six eleven to one fifty, the overall savings by cutting what appears to be supplies for English and math, are two hundred and three hundred dollars each. I don't see those as significant or necessary. I'm just curious, like, where those, how did the numbers at one fifty come about, and how did we get down to fifty, I mean, if it's.
It, it was just identify thousand cuts.
Yeah.
So again, looked at what we spent recently, could it get cut back, we have less students, okay, yeah, I can probably take fifty dollars out of this line, fifty dollars out of that line. Can we add it back? Absolutely, absolutely.
I mean, just looking at the long-term, I mean, with cutting mass supply is saving three hundred and sixty dollars, I don't think is gonna help the school reach our budget or up these percentages.
Steve, you have access, if you have access to your Edover Elementary School, again, you've got the board event packet that included the January eighth minutes, you receive that from Diane King on January twenty ninth. If you don't go back to that, 'cause there will be the minutes for you if you want to do that.
Perfect.
Okay?
And I may have reviewed, I may have, may have reviewed him, just put it in there, it's a broken link, as well.
Let's come to that.
Thank you.
That's where they are, okay? So I didn't, I couldn't find them in all the packets I have, 'cause one was missing, so.
Thank you.
Actually, I couldn't seem to, if I can find any part of the license.
I do, but.
Who does all the ordering for the, sorry, who does all the ordering for the supply closet? Based off of.
I'm sorry, you wanna help us?
Based off of their recommendations, which is kind of.
So there's a list of.
I, I'm sorry, I would say they, I, I mean the teachers.
There's a list of, um, kind of generic items, and I'll give that to the staff when I ask them to give me what they think they need for next year, and so keep in mind, this is what will be in the supply closet. And that list was generated by just seeing what kind of common things are being ordered amongst all classrooms, like post-it notes, um, like staples, like paper clips, before each person would order their own Scotch tape, paper clips, post. Before, each person would order their own Scotch tape, paper clips, post-it note. So we were trying to keep those kinds of generic things in one place, so they can just take one box of staples as opposed to ordering twelve boxes. So I ordered twelve boxes and then I'm just looking at one box.
And to determine the twelve boxes, based historically or do teacher survey determine what they're gonna need to follow?
Yeah, I asked them, can you give me an idea of what they need? And I take a look at it and I go down to the supply closet, see how many I have, and I make sure there's enough in there for the start of the school. So it really kinda gets wrapped, it gets overstuffed.
I was gonna say, so we do a large order at the beginning of the year?
Yep, and then as the year goes on, there's a, there's a clipboard and they write down when they took the last item. And I'll go down and say, okay, this clipboard needs a little more. So right now, it's pretty sparse.
Karen, you mentioned that, I noticed Mr. Anderson came in, is there something that he was gonna be presenting to us?
No.
Okay.
I just mentioned that he was at the shared services committee meeting.
Okay.
And given that Sally has developed the schools list of contracts that Eric had also talked about.
He's hiding.
He's hiding it there. Um, that Eric was gonna be developing a list of the towns, um, contracts, so that we can take a look at that. And I don't know that he's been able to do that in the last two days.
Uh, I've started.
Excellent.
But I I certainly don't have a comprehensive list at this point.
There you go.
People walking in the office.
There you go.
Um, so one, one question I would have that got brought up, I know it was brought by, we were in the meeting. And uh, I spoke actually earlier. The contract that we're entering into O L, what is that net savings over the current?
So we haven't entered it yet. So I, Eric and I actually had this conversation yesterday.
Yesterday?
Yesterday. Um, the finance person, I watch financial news. And the virus is actually affecting work prices, their guidance.
Yes, it is.
Um, so I said to Eric, normally we go out and we solicit um, for price books, uh, before. And I said, if I can take advantage of this dive and skip requirement of student solicitation, we have a potential savings. Um, do you think we would get the buy-in from the town? To do this?
Yeah, sure.
And and Adrian said that.
Yeah.
Said that, yeah, so we haven't locked in yet. I think the price will continue to go down a little bit more, so I'm watching it every day.
So for, what are, price per gallon, what are we currently budgeting? I mean, the price per gallon, do you know?
We budgeted for two seventy-nine.
And the price that we're saying is can it continue to go down, is it?
Right now, it's a, I think one eighty-one was the last one I got.
One eighty-one. So it's, and how many gallons can we budget for?
We um, I'm gonna reduce the number of gallons, cause if you pass it too much, you take, I don't see for not using all that you might ask for. Um, so we have the potential of saving about um, ten thousand dollars.
Off of the current.
Budget.
But off of the number before it goes down again.
Correct.
So, we should be at a minimum, we can figure at this point ten thousand dollars is a safe number and that could continue to. How many, how many gallons, one of the things, the only thing that I do get somewhat concerned about.
So when I say ten, I, if if this thing drops from the two seventy-nine I have in the budget down to one seventy-nine, then I'll save.
So we're.
So it's at one eighty-one right now.
So we're at two, ten thousand gallons?
We, yes.
So ten thousand gallons, and that number is based off of this year? Is it a reduction off of what this year's was?
No, this year we're at two twenty-eight. We lock in for the year.
No, uh, total gallons. My concern is we had a very mild winter and we're not basing.
Right, so we locked in at thirty-three thousand gallons. We traditionally use more than that. Not much, we're we're pretty close. Um, right now, we're tracking at, I just did this, um, we're, we have used sixteen thousand gallons. Um, and I still have, that does not include, that includes February. So we, we use oil in March and April and a little bit in May.
Okay, now I'm really confused, cause we went from.
So we.
Two seventy-nine to one eighty-one or one seventy-nine, a dollar a gallon.
Yeah.
We use thirty-three thousand gallons, but we're gonna say ten thousand dollars.
No, we budgeted for thirty-three thousand gallons.
Budgets, but.
And we've used sixteen.
Sixteen.
So we have remaining seventeen, if my math is correct. And we have three more months to get through, where we took these oil.
So next, but next year, we're gonna drop that budget down to ten thousand gallons?
No, no.
No.
Thirty, so the net saving should be thirty thousand.
Okay, yeah, yes.
Okay, so I was very confused by that, a thousand dollars. I see like everyone.
You're, you're right, and yeah, you're right.
I, I guess I, I was in a very large size growing up, so I.
Sorry, you're doing good.
The other thing that Adrian had brought up was was the health insurance. Um.
Six and nine versus eight eleven.
Right, so when we put together the budget, we were told by our insurance consultants to figure um, around nine and a half percent, so it's in the budget. If Ram put it in at six, all I can say is they have not locked in their prices. Um, and they don't lock in their prices till May. So we, we can go down on the percentage I use, but um, if they're saying six percent now, that's not the accurate six percent.
I didn't see the detailed budget for Ram, which I don't think I'd yet prepared. So the six percent that Adrian cited, I imagine was only what Dave Castania has been providing, which is, cause I was here for the Ram meeting on Monday and they did not have a comprehensive budget. So that must, six percent must be based off the summary document that was given to the Ram board members. You haven't seen a Ram budget either, right?
Right.
Okay.
Um, and a lot of the um. The insurer, all it does is take one person to come on or one person to come on, and that's the point that we know is like.
See, the only thing that I would say is understanding that we haven't, the six and a half is, but we went, they recommended nine and a half. When we budgeted nine and a half.
Hmm?
When we budgeted nine and a half. Yeah, I mean, but if it's, it's a variable, it's a second largest high.
It's changing the percentage.
I say, yeah, it's the second largest line item, so a half a percent is a significant amount saved.
Yeah, and yes. So I can drop that down.
Can you explain to me the NIAC certification for the benefits that has? Well, first of all, we have to be NIAC accredited in order to receive the smart start funding that we receive. And also the readiness funds too?
And school ready.
And the readiness funds, so there's a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars in grant money that you wouldn't have if you weren't accredited.
Okay. Yep, I'm either of the, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Um, alright, sorry, one another.
Your voice is back?
Uh, amazing, certain things bring it back, funny, so money is one of them. Uh, so if we're budgeting fifty thousand dollars right now as far as two days of IT support from Eastcon, okay?
Yeah, so in that ninety, that six thousand dollar number, I dropped that down, well, X, take that back, X, not X six. Um.
Yeah, then I dropped it by ten thousand.
Right, I dropped it down. And um.
Well, we're budgeted for, what's the total budget for that IT support? Is it twenty thousand? The half, so it should be half. Or you said there's a sliding scale?
Yeah, it's. It's not a one, move on.
But that's. We're, we're not, we're not taking it down to half.
Yeah.
Now, we're going from two days to one day.
No, we're, we're.
Eastcon?
Yeah. We're one and a half days now.
We're taking it down.
Oh, we're going from one and a half to.
To one.
Two and a half day. So what was that total? I think that was fifty thousand maybe, did I see fifty thousand thirty?
So the original budget added at twenty-seven five, added at fifty-four, fifty-five thousand.
I can't hear you, can you clarify the numbers, please?
Yeah, we had Eastcon for IT tech in the original budget, um, for fifty-five thousand.
So I'm assuming that's gonna include more than just the IT people on site?
Um, that.
So the fifty-five thousand, you're gonna reduce them to one day, you're gonna reduce a half a day, we're only gonna say ten grand? They're gonna be forty thousand for one day?
Well, that's, that's fifteen is the savings.
Then it panned out, we got to ten, that's where I'm going.
So in the ninety-six thousand, there was also additional reductions in there. Um. So in addition to those reductions, I took another ten off.
Okay, so we already reduced, so when is the final IT costs come in for Eastcon for you?
And I'm not, I'm not counting, I'm not counting the uh, website support.
Yeah, that's a separate, that's a fifty.
You weren't counting the website support, isn't that fifty-five?
No.
No.
So, and and unless I'm mistaken, something that said on the email last night from shared services, that it was at fifty thousand. And then the website management, I, I thought you were getting to fifty-five because the IT from last night was fifty and then another fifty-five for website management. So fifty, fifty-five, not including.
So that was thrown together really quickly for the town. And I'm guessing at what we would be spending for IT services, that is not going to mirror what's in the budget. That was like a totally different request to give out a list of contracts and the approximate cost. So they don't match. So Eastcon would be down to. Forty-four thousand dollars.
Not including website.
Not.
So and what, so that includes a person here one day a week?
Yes.
For forty-four thousand.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's two half days a week. But there's also uh, support on the days when they're not here, when something goes down. So for example, this is just a small example, but um, on the two days that we had off over the February break. Um, I was in the office and the printer, the copiers were offline. And I was able to shoot them a text and they were able to bring it back online just remotely. And that's not something that I would have been capable of doing. And I'm not sure if Mrs. Fraser was here, she would or would not have been capable of doing it or not, in terms of.
No, I mean, that and, I mean, we need some level of IT support, I'm just, it's forty-four thousand dollars for somebody to be here a day, a week seems comparatively like a lot of money. When we're looking at all, looking at the rest of the budget. And we, we cut, we cut the half a day, we say ten grand. Like an extra half day was ten grand.
And then going right.
Now we're down to one day and that, but that's still forty plus thousand dollars, as I have to teach.
And they run that into what Ram just did, but there.
I mean, I do agree, we need to dig in to make sure that that, what, what that covered, cause Ram has a lot, you know, they've got servers and other things.
Well, I, I believe the servers are, I, I believe in don't open it on this place. I, I think the servers are covered by some, another condition.
Yeah, and they're, they're, that's why I said, I think we need more clarification there. I'm just from a standpoint of looking at a number of forty plus thousand dollars for somebody to be here a day a week, that seems excessive. Especially when we are being asked to reduce the budget in the ways that we are, so. Uh, yeah, we need to make sure, we need IT support, I mean, it's, we, we, there's no way we can't, we can function without it, but there's gotta be a better way.
If you look through that black.
Yep.
Covered one, that, you know, outlined a lot of their service, a lot of what they were doing, that's one of the reasons.
And we were paying sixty though for a full-time employee. Who was doing this before, correct?
Sixty without that.
No, the, the worksheet had sixty-three total benefits he's making, forty-five plus benefits came like sixty-three. I thought.
And I'm not defending it or not?
Yeah.
That person could do a lot of services.
And, you know, I mean, I just wanna make sure, again, what, at two thirds of what we were paying a full-time employee to cover a day. Again, I understand there's infrastructure, there's a lot of other things, but still, we are being asked to look at this budget. You know, you know, in depth, and that's a line item that seems rather large. We still have the technology, uh, hopefully it was asked to be added to the, do we get a technology update or is there a technology committee? Shows us what we're doing in the school with the technology.
We did.
And then that included on this.
We usually have.
To the.
We usually have a report prepared once a year.
On the T M O.
On the T M O.
So there is still, there's technology. Um, I think it's more kind of clarification also. And again, I apologize to discuss a lot of that, but.
One of the reasons for having this budget workshop, Steve, is not the problem.
Field trips, uh, to be paid by student activities, I know, you know, I was actually surprised that we haven't been asked to contribute anything as parents at any point for any of these. Is there a reason why, I noticed there, so there's a budget reduction of eighty-four hundred dollars. Does that mean that those will be field trips that are covered, or does that mean that we're going to ask parents to contribute?
The latter.
The latter, parents to contribute for.
That was the consideration there.
Beautiful. Um, on that note, and I understand to some extent, we can't require it, but are we still, uh, we were also surprised when we never got a list of supplies to bring the same with our kids to school. Grand, you know, normally Walmart, you know, has a back school sale, you get, when you get your teacher assignment, hey, bring a pack of markers and some folders and.
All of that. Are we required to, by statute, to provide a certain, this, a certain number of supplies for students?
Can we?
And.
Is there any way to request, like, can we still request a parent's supply? And I mean, if you can't supply it, the, the school will provide.
But we have to also meet our statutory requirements, so there is a list that, and I don't know the list offhand, but.
So your question, I'm sorry, your question was.
Back to school when we normally went, ever, growing up, we always got a list of, hey, you need
Oh.
A calculator, you need some markers, you need a couple folders. And as of right now, I mean, I've never seen that just switch.
Yeah, the board provides a majority of supplies.
Right.
Um, for the school.
Can we, is it, are we statutorily required to not ask the parents to provide some of those?
We can ask for certain things, the board is required to provide a certain amount of supplies at certain, certain, certain points, the beginning of the school year.
Right, but so, for instance, I know all the folders that we get the kids and, you know, the pencil boxes and stuff like that. My daughter just went up to, at the middle school and we just bought all that stuff for her. So I guess what I'm saying is we were told statutorily that we can't do it, but we.
Not that we can't do it, that we're required to provide a certain.
Right, right, but.
Supplies.
Right, but what we're, what we're doing here though is, is we're, we're trying to see if we can cut back on something and have the parents, you know, you know, provide us some of it. And we've discussed this for the past like two meetings, I think. So what is a, so what is a list of stuff that. And we've discussed this for the past like two meetings, I think, so what is a, so what is a list of stuff that they can, that parents can buy and what savings will that be to the taxpayers?
I mean, I don't think at any point that we're gonna tell kids that, alright, you couldn't, you, you didn't bring any Crayola's, you're not coloring today, uh, but.
And we can.
I think most parents would be amicable to saying, hey, I, and quite frankly, I'm sure, watch back to school sales, they probably get a cheaper than we do. Yeah, when you go back, go to Walmart, I know I can get.
As a teacher, when I used to buy things for the classroom, I looked for those sales. And I buy them because they were so cheap. Why ask the schools pay for it when they're gonna pay you three and four times the amount on going to a vendor?
So would, would it be financially more feasible to give teachers a stipend to buy supplies rather than stocking a supply closet full of stuff?
I don't know.
I think, I think you'd have to ask your teachers.
Is that something that?
That probably depends on what's in the system.
Is that something that we could do, maybe reach out to the teachers and see if that's, you know, I mean, you know, it's efficiency and it's getting them what they need and quality of supplies. All of stuff is, which has been a concern over this past year. So if we can get some better quality stuff or stuff that they need and have some, and, and have some savings, maybe we can ask for the teachers' input on what is provided in the classrooms.
I think you open yourself up to all kinds of, you know, differences in terms of people having different things, I mean, you know, one of the things that Laura was talking about is sort of the,
Yeah.
you know, uniformity of the markers, the dry erase markers, the blue sticks, things like that. I mean, what if, you know, somebody buys, you know, a hundred dollars worth of things and they, they ran out of money? Um, I don't know, I mean, there's.
I guess we'll find that out when we ask them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Want to move on to, so, just going through some of the budget reduction considerations. And, uh, you know, we kind of talked about superintendent at some point. We still have to figure out what we're gonna do on that front. Um, principal reduction, my, my concern with that reduction, quite frankly, is, oh, Vince John, as you mentioned, you lost it. We lost administrator, your responsibilities were increased. Um, some of that required us to outplace, and now we're gonna reduce you forty days. I don't think that that's cost efficient, cause then we're gonna have to budget. We're gonna have to properly contract out to fill up whatever, you can't do it that way. You know, it doesn't make sense to me to reduce the principals. I don't think that's makes any sense to reduce your, so would there be?
We haven't done that yet, that was just an idea.
Yeah, no, I'm, that's why I'm saying, I was going through here going, okay, where can we?
So would there be any hidden costs through Eastcon or, or, or whoever that they would have to, that they would have to pick up some of here?
No, there would not be these ten at all.
No, no, I'm, I, I'm asking, you know, is.
There, there wouldn't be, but, you know, to Steve's point, um, the whole idea, the, the whole idea behind that sheet with all of those reductions across the board is that it touches everybody in the organization and no one's left, you know, untouched, so to speak. That's why it's reflected that way on that sheet. It's something for the board to consider, it's something for the board to look at as a potential line item. Um, I agree with you, I mean, on a personal level, I agree with you, but.
Who's your?
Knowing how it's working, yes, then.
But you have some tough decisions to make, so you kind of have to look at everything.
Well, and one of the things that I wanted to make, you know, and Shannon, correct me if I'm wrong, and I'll defer to you as the chair.
Oh, believe me, I will. Yes, sir.
Um, so the board of selectmen sent us a note, or they voted on sending us a letter saying reduce your budget by four hundred thousand. That was a recommendation. There's nothing that says we need to submit a budget that is four hundred thousand under last year.
Moreover, there is no thing that gives them um any kind of authority over the Board of Education.
Over our budget. I think, you know, point taken that the original budget is pointed, which was a four hundred thousand increase over last year. You know, from a town perspective, as a town resident, isn't in the best interest of the town, you know, or, or the kid. But, you know, running reduction at seven oh two to get down to this eight hundred thousand dollar number, I mean, we, we don't have to hit this.
We don't.
And I, you know, I think it's a good exercise to go through and figure out what makes the most sense, where can we cut, but like as a board, you know, I just wanna make sure we're all in the same page, we don't, we still need to do what's best for, making sure our kids have education and everything else, and what it takes for them to school is what it takes for them to school.
So my further discussions have said that they are hopeful that we will have some kind of reduction from this year's budget. They knew that four hundred thousand dollars was a stretch. And we will do what we need to do to take care of our responsibility with the priorities being the students and the facility and then the town, as far as where things stay. That's our responsibility. Um, so we have to do our job and we're doing it very comprehensively this year. And I think then it goes over to the Board of Finance to look at. Um, and Sally and Laura and I go to speak with the Board of Finance about the budget, seeing as we're such a large part of the eventual town budget, um, to address their questions about the Board of Education budget. And many of them have come to these meetings and budget workshops and.
And I think it's important when that, as I'm sure you guys will, but when we go there, that we understand, number one, you know, as, as they have realized as a board of selectmen, that a number of things that previous administrations didn't get done, they now have to do, which is hurting, there's road infrastructure, there's bridge issues, and so all of that is coming at once. Um, and they're gonna have to figure out what their priorities are, in the same way that when you come to us and say, your number's too high, we want you down here. That's also a process. And we need, you know, that we're gonna continue to work on by the establishment of the Shared Services Committee, by looking at what we can share with the town, where we can, you know, reduce over time, and I think when we present this to Board of Finance, I'm sure that that will be related to it. We're not done necessarily done, we're gonna continue to look for ways to make this best for the kids, but also most cost effective as possible. This is what we could do in the months since you gave us that letter.
So in my four and a half years as chair, um, we have never had that kind of recommendation or request. Um, and this year, um, not with Laura's recommendation, but Laura had an input that every town with, which she's previously been associated, they did get such a recommendation. The Board of Selectmen was already leaning that way, so when we had our discussion, they determined that, um, we have one here, and I'm not gonna put Scott on the spot, but um, they believed that that was something that they wanted to do. They wanted to give us an indication of what they would like to see occur with the Board of Education budget, knowing that they can only make a, a recommendation or a request, and then we have to do our job. They were originally looking at recommending um six hundred and, six hundred to seven hundred thousand dollars because they were basing that off the N B R number. Um, so just to give a flavor, um, they did in fact cut that back to four hundred thousand as far as their request. Is that accurate?
Correct.
Thank you.
You guys write a little bit of a standstill until we figure out.
Well, one of the things, so I, I don't know, but I would like to personally see, I mean, we talked about reducing IT support to one day or what, and ten thousand dollars. I mean, I, I would like to see if there's a way to get that line item to between twenty five and thirty thousand. It seems like a more reasonable number. Uh. Is that possible? I don't know, but again, looking at paying, at, at the point, again, maybe we can find somebody who's enough, who's good with computers and specialized director.
Holly.
I hear my, no, I hear my point, you Steve, find that person. Go ahead. Um, to back up on that, um, be more serious about it. We did at Shared Services Committee talk about sharing an IT person with the town. Um, and I don't know, Kid and Eric.
Yes.
Um, is there a need on the town's basis to have an IT person?
So currently, the town subcontract its IT services with the town of South Windsor.
Okay.
Uh, where we are just kind of starting resigning, uh, I think we have a two-year contract with them. The town contracts for basically one day a month um of IT services.
Oh, wow. Wow, okay.
So, which is tough for us, to be honest. So we've got them to agree to split it and give us basically four hours of IT support every two weeks. Um, now, we have at the town level discussed bringing in-house the library also. Uh, because currently the library has their own IT provider. Um, so the school has one, the town hall has one, and the library has one. So, you know, depending on what the cost basis is, bringing somebody in-house that could do all the locations might, you know, be a savings, but it sounds like the, and it kind of makes sense that the school's IT needs are quite a bit bigger than the rest of the town's IT needs. So the school would kind of dominate that conversation if we were to have it.
I'd forgotten, you, you had told me previously that was one day a month, and I'd forgotten it was so minimal on the town's benefit.
Sure.
Do you know how much the, the library would be looking at, or a, a half a day a year, a month, or?
So they don't even, they don't have anybody regularly scheduled.
Right.
They use one of the, the local, uh, I think they use the, I write down on Route Six. Um, and.
Is Kennedy Exchange or?
Yeah, Kennedy Exchange, and they just use them on call when they have IT stuff they can't figure out. Um, but I don't know exactly what they budget for IT, but it's not a lot. The town, I think, don't quote me on this, but I think the town budget's somewhere about eight thousand total. Uh, but that includes, you know, emergency on-call stuff. If somebody has a problem, you can just put a ticket into the help desk and they'll log in remotely and deal with us.
So when you say total, is that eight thousand for the town and the library, or eight thousand just for the town?
No, that's eight thousand for the town.
Okay, and then the library would be in addition to that, whatever they do with Kennedy Exchange.
Correct.
So we're really not talking about a lot of savings because if we do an IT person here, hopefully they would help the town and the library. Um, but maybe if we would take the lead on that.
That would probably be, I mean, if you ended up with an IT person, I mean, you would be more than happy to utilize their services.
We have an excellent one, but I'm gonna keep this quiet over here. Um, and we're just gonna add her responsibilities right now. So, yes.
So we actually went down that road when, um, Eastcon first started working here.
Right.
And the town, um, would call and ask if they could come over and help.
Yeah.
And. You can chime in.
That was before my time.
Let's move into his time.
Yes, but their infrastructure is in such poor addition
Is ready, but yes.
that Eastcon won't touch it until they get up to standards.
Right, and which were.
Which I don't think their one day a month is addressing.
Uh, no, no, and the town's.
But we're budgeting for a whole new.
Their new IT gap, the new asset.
System, yes.
Right, so the town passed at referendum funds for a major IT upgrade at the town hall, which is in the works.
Yep. Yes.
So I, it's about to my original conversation is, once they get up to at least standards, then I think you can look at sharing services, probably tell all the towns.
Or we find something that can do it all.
On that.
So, and I don't know what the cost basis of it would be, but South Windsor, at least one other town, so South Windsor basically farms out their IT department and they cover four or five other towns. And in some of those towns, they cover the school systems also. So they have that capability, but I don't know what the cost basis would be. You'd have to pursue a contract with them and see how it worked out relatively speaking.
So I feel like we're at a little bit of a standstill with where to go with this, because we're kind of waiting on information from the town and more things to explore and, um, and frankly, you know, what we're gonna do with the superintendent position, I mean, there's a lot of unknowns here. So as chair, where, where do you think we should go with this, and how do we formulate a budget when there's so many unknowns?
I think we have to, to the best of our ability, plan for what we want to see in a superintendent and how much we want to budget for that. Um, how much we want to budget for an IT person or Eastcon services, and that, we have to base it off of that. Um, and then look at everything else that is part of our budget to come up with a budget for next year. We are supposed to have our budget by charter to the Board of Finance by March third, which is another reason that we scheduled for tonight. But Board of Finance is not meeting again, um, because they don't have any budget to look at until the end of March. So I certainly would feel comfortable, especially given all the information we've received tonight, um, discussing this again at our March eleventh regularly scheduled board meeting, I know you're not able to be here at that time, Dan, but um, either that or we create another meeting between now and March eleventh that you can attend, um, to further
Well, we have.
look through all the information that we've received tonight before we start making final decisions.
Oh, Laura, how long do you anticipate going before we feel like we bottomed out at the fuel costs and sign contract? Oh, we, oh, so.
So if I can add to that, um, I don't know if you can do stuff at least that you agree on. Um, and, and kind of whittle it down that way, so. And I'm just throwing this out as an example, if you can agree on that we're gonna go pre-take from three classes to two, well then, and, and I'm not saying you are agreeing, I'm just saying, I don't know if there's anything on this list, you can at least say, hey, let's be on that. So that you at least are starting to look at where you're whittling down to, and then, you know, whatever that is, you at least have something if you needed to go to the town like that, you can say you got to X. Um.
So.
So I don't know if there's anything on this list plus the few or less.
I mean, personally, I think, and.
But that's, that's a starting point, you might be able to, to work with.
And I guess the one other thing I'll say, um, that we were admonished to do by Nick Caruso when he was coming in to train us, um, and very bluntly, is it's our job to come up with a budget, and then it is their job to use the budget to meet the requirements of the school. And our job is not to micromanage as much as we would love to, um, what they're, we come up with a budget and they use the budget um, and implement what we have provided to them as far as funds. So I respect what Laura has done with that with regard to building in contingencies, and now that we're under such, uh, scrutiny, taking those back out and seeing what the effect of that is. But it really is our job to come up with a budget, um, and then for, for them to, to implement and use that budget.
I honestly don't know if I'm okay with that, and I don't know how everyone else feels, but when you look at such a blow to some of the class size stuff and teaching positions and things of that sort, I am not willing to bow on just a number and leaving it up to other people to possibly do something like that, I, I, I. I'll wait, we'll make this right away, um. I don't feel comfortable voting on something that could potentially ne- um, and negatively in, impact the students at the school. Just be like, here you go, so I, 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 I feel we should have some input as to what happens.
Well, the budget is every line item, Dan, I'm not saying here, take four million dollars and do with it as you will. I mean, they don't have tremendous amount of discretion, but.
Right, well, what she's, what she's just recommending was we, is right, is that we go through this and kind of formulate what we want and what we don't want, right?
Well, I think she's looking for, if I can, uh, my understanding was, and I didn't want some clarification what you had just said, but was Laura, you're asking us to look and say, what do we agree on that would, so the next time you come to the front of us, that's already taken out, so we can see what.
Right.
And then see where we're, where, and when you're talking about we give them a budget, I think the idea is, we can look and say, okay, IT seems like, this is how much we want a budget for IT, but we're not telling them you have to go here and hire this person.
Correct.
And use it, if you have your thirty thousand dollars for IT and you choose to farm it out and find somebody that can do three days, and great, if you only want do somebody one day, that's.
Correct.
A private of a.
We come up with the budget.
We come up with the numbers, how, how span within the bucket.
Exactly.
Is how.
Exactly.
So when I gave um kind of a budget overview since I'm forever ago, um. I, you know, I keep giving you financials that break it down by objects.
Right.
And that's what you're basically approving is those objects. So if if we go over or under, then we're coming to you to ask to move money around.
Right.
And and the beauty of of approving it by object is salaries is an object. So, um, you know, our task is to is to stay in those, stay in those lanes. And if we don't, we we need to come to you and say why we're not and ask for your approval to do so.
Right. Right, so was it wrong when you said that we should kind of go through this here and decide on what we want to leave in there and what we want to take out?
In concept.
Okay, and so.
So like, if if you agree that, you know, the analysis I did to to get to the ninety-six is a good analysis, let's check that number out.
Right. Right, so Shannon, I wasn't saying that we're going around and telling them that we have to use this at company.
No, 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 no.
I don't want to give them, I would like to go through here and try to figure out some of these things that have been been presented and decide if we want to keep this specific stuff in, like she just said, or we want to take it out. I'm not trying to uh micromanage, I'm not trying to uh tell where to go, I'm simply trying to decide on on uh out of this. And on top of it, you know, right, I mean, you know, I I just, I think we need to go through this, you know, tonight and and decide what we want to leave in and
So.
what we want to take out. So that way we kind of have a, we're moving somewhere. I feel like we've had three, three of the, right, this is the third one, three workshops and we're.
We've had two workshops and one board meeting.
Right, thank you, alright. And we're kind of stagnant. So I feel like if we can work on this and they can work on what we've asked of them, we can kind of move forward and we can get somewhere.
Does everybody have a copy of the orange sheet that you're referring to?
If you have a new one, I appreciate it. I'll throw it over there.
I do.
Your doodle's on the ground.
It's not that.
Ah, wow.
I I like my. Uh. Non-salary and benefits reductions, the reductions.
Those, that, a lot of that we wanted to be um added to the. A lot of the work. Um. Um to be, I mean, it's a stuff for.
Contingency.
Say thank you, doctor.
Okay, so contingency.
It's all a lot of those contingencies.
What's the current projected enrollment for pre-K?
How many? Thirty.
Current projected enrollment as of right, right now, how many kids do we got that we expect to be in pre-K next year?
So it's it's a moving target at the end of February. Uh there are eighteen residents that we expect to return. There are ballpark fourteen to sixteen families that are resident families out there that have not even, one-fourth of them have submitted paperwork, not even a quarter of them. They're just names that we know, people that have inquired, people that, families that are in the building that have siblings. Uh I made a few phone calls today, but I wasn't able to call all the way down the list. I had several of the families I called today. I was surprised to learn that they said that they were gonna be keeping their kids home or in whatever program they're in right now. I was surprised by that because I expected them to say, oh yeah, we're interested, or oh yeah, we want to come. Um so that number though could change dramatically. You know, right now, the like the fourteen to sixteen, I tried to look at like the most realistic possibilities. So if you add the two together, you're looking at thirty to thirty-four kids in that window. And it's and it's the end of February. Um and so one of the things that we know is that during the course of the year, if there are current three students, if there are two-year-olds that are turning three, anytime during next school year, they're eligible to come, we need to make room for them, okay? We know that. Um we know that there are gonna be other people that are gonna be calling. I'm only talking right now about resident families, not even talking about.
So confirmed, you said about twenty-five percent of the fourteen to sixteen have submitted paperwork?
Correct.
You do have, I think, in the packet in front of your estimates that we reviewed for the number of classes for next year.
Yeah, and I just wanted to check, 'cause I I knew that was a moving target, so that's why.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh. Yes, um. So, the non-salary and benefit reduction, which is a contingency, from my understanding, that we kind of went through the first item on there, non-salary benefit, that's like the contingencies of them.
Yeah, there, I mean, it's, again, it was a five thousand cuts and get back to your fifty dollars here and there, but yeah, there was a whole list that was provided, um.
So that that comes from, okay, so now I'm connecting it up, that was that list that I was looking at, alright.
Yes.
Uh. And this one I just heard about, somebody, and again, you may have done, uh, the impact of reducing the number of buses?
So, my understanding is, right, there is laws on how long kids can be on school buses for, right, up to an hour, I believe. And if it was looking like, if it was looking like there would be a problem with that, they could rearrange bus stops, so you would have more gathering of, you know,
Group stops.
uh more on group stops, so we would be able to
Correct.
stay within.
We even, we talked about um the possibility of of reducing another bus and John had told us that the average bus stand was about forty-four minutes, if I'm recalling, um our discussion about that.
Yeah, uh so I think it's a little bit less than that right now this year.
No, it's less than that, but if we reduce by another bus, then you said we're still well within the hour, um it's weird, I don't know.
Yeah, there was some discussion at this, one one of the last meetings, if you remember from the audience, where someone contacted um our local Andover resident bus supervisor, but not Daco, Daco's home office in terms of like how that would impact the routes. And you know, she had speculated that the routes were going to increase considerably, the length of the routes, but we have not, you know, fully confirmed or verified that.
It's not the official front, correct, from the company, it's not.
Yeah.
Now, I also remember.
And we have dropped five.
We have already.
It, well, in the past four years, we've gotten six to five, yes.
Yeah, correct. To five. Um and I couldn't even miss, I thought I remember reading something about non-RAM days, was that?
Yeah, so um I had, when I put this together, I um I don't, so I have the calendar in front of me?
We we did the calendar for next year, exactly the same as Ram's calendar.
But there are some days for them that, for example,
Right, are.
they have some teacher professional development days, things like that, where.
Teacher professional days, right.
And those are car savings or not going?
So I had budgeted more non-RAM days. So when we share a bus with Ram, we don't pay half price. When we have school and they don't have school, we pay a hundred percent.
Brand roll price, 'cause we don't want.
So going back and looking at where I could reduce, I had too many non-RAM days.
Okay, so that's gonna find that first off.
That's in my ninety-six.
Okay, that's other reasons, okay.
And we also have more school days.
We do.
Ram does one AM and we're at one E two A.
I mean, and one of the things with reducing pre-K from three to two, we're currently two classes.
We're at three classes.
We're three.
We are at three classes, yeah. And we have, we have forty to forty-six kids. Yeah, forty-six, we're going down to potentially thirty.
We're looking at two classes.
Two classes.
Correct.
That's the proposal.
Right.
Or that's the suggestion. Uh, we're at forty-six kids, yeah, thirty-four, so that's a move. Okay, so that makes it, and we we put them in there to evaluate with class size and everything, but I don't think that this budget can support the additional adding to additional classes.
Shannon, do we have to go down and vote on each one, or?
No, we're not, you go down our budget.
So, okay, so just so I am following here, so I know I'm voting on.
I don't know that we're voting on anything, Dan.
No, we're just giving her a list. That's how she comes to us to.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm I'm lost.
We're trying.
Yeah, well, that, we're trying to, we're, we're gonna, we'll make sure to come back and bring it, bring it back, let's figure out what we. Essentially, everything in the top, is there any issues in the top section that anyone has with cuts? Um so the first, non-salary, so non-salary benefits reductions, which is once again where we work on the budget, remove contingency items, ninety-six thousand, forty-six thousand. Um eliminating the two additional classes, these are not current classes, these are classes we were looking at adding, um which would be a savings of one fifty-eight, one oh-two. Reducing pre-K from three to two classes based off of the class size, savings of one oh-six, one fifty-five. And reducing the number of buses from five to four, which is a savings of thirty thousand, six ninety-seven. So that running reduction by itself is a three hundred ninety-one thousand dollars off of the proposed budget that we initially got, which was, from my underst- right around that, an increase from last year. This brings us pretty close to zero, zero this budget.
Yeah, yes, correct.
Well, not zero this budget, no.
I I would like to eliminate the um reduction in the pre-K uh classes. I think we should keep that at three classes.
My only concern with that is, I'm not, we can go back and we have to add, but we are at forty-six kids right now, divided by three, so we're average fifteen per class. Right now, we're saying third, I mean, so eighteen returning. So we have fourteen to sixteen, I mean, the problem, and I do understand this, is it's so up in the air to try and figure out out of those fourteen to sixteen residents, how many are kind of. I mean, I I agree that we don't need much more than fifteen three and four-year-olds in a classroom. I got three of them at home and
Right, so.
I can't handle that, and so.
Right, so, right, that's why I'm saying my experience with an age group, I feel we need to leave it at.
But if we end up with thirty kids and three ki- and three teachers, then we've got ten.
Right.
Ten per class. So if at the end of this, which we're also, but if we do go up, if we go up to forty-five, if we had that many applicants, we're also gonna see an increase in tuition.
That's right.
We're gonna see a lot of increase in or potentially funding, which we can then vote to
Correct.
add the teacher if that, if we get closer to the school year and we have the students that necessitate it,
Yes.
then I say we add it back in. But if we don't, aren't gonna potentially have that revenue, you know, or have, having ten kids per class and three classes, there, it just, I don't think is fiscally concerned. And I just think in this budget, doesn't, I don't know if it makes sense.
There's significant amount we're already paying out of the budget for for two classes.
However, I.
Well, I'm also looking at it from an ed- education standpoint too. I mean, this isn't, this isn't just
I agree, I agree.
So am I, too, my kids are in.
Numbers on, right, this isn't just numbers on a paper. Uh for me, this is education and these are our children and I.
I'm very well aware. I mean, but what our kids need, we we have to look and like, you know, and I've said this before, just as I, I, there's a lot of things I'd love to do with my kids. That would be great for them, but I have a finite amount of income, so we have to do what's responsible and what makes sense so that we can maintain, you know, we we do what we have to, what they need first. I just, if we have enough kids to support this, if suddenly we have forty kids in this program, then absolutely, I think we can convene as board and say, this does not make sense to have two classes anymore.
Yes.
But right now, we have a commitment, from what I'm hearing, of eighteen plus twenty-five percent of fifty. Well, that's.
So we. But again, it it is early and.
Right, right now, what you said, we're looking at, we're budgeting for thirty to thirty-four students. And that's being responsible, I think, as far as our budget.
Right, and that's, and that's pushing, that's pushing the limits of to pre-K.
No, I think, I think fifteen is our limit.
Pushing the limits.
And that's also losing a teacher, correct?
Correct.
Right.
It's it's pushing, yeah.
It it's right at that, that.
So, we're gonna run into exactly what happened last year, where we laid a teacher off and then we had to add a teacher back on and we were scrambling in September. I feel like there's other cuts that we're looking at right now that could make up for that. So why not take it out for now?
Well, just to clarify, uh for last year, we did have three classes budgeted last year, pre-K.
Right.
Ended up adding a class somewhere else in the building.
But that's what I, but what I'm saying though is, it was a pre-K teacher, regardless of where it came from, okay, it was a pre-K teacher that left because that was the newest, right? And and so it's, it it's still a teacher gap regardless, and it's still a class that's right on the fence, um.
Right.
You know, why don't we take it out for now and see if there's cost savings somewhere else with everything else that we're doing? Because not only does, not only is it that, but it it's also uncertainty for them as well. And it affects their everyday lives and the overall climate of the school, which I'm sure we'll get into at our, at our next meeting. I I think leaving that, taking that out for now and seeing if we can have reductions elsewhere is the best choice, so.
I will concede. Hey, right now, I don't think, alright, we want to leave it in, you know that's a line item that we've got to look at, we'll be closer as we get. Well, if we leave it in for now, and we come back in about, we'll also have that just another week or another couple of weeks to kind of see where that comes, rolls out. I mean, it's just, I, if we end up with less than thirty kids, you know, there's we have, we have to be able to support to, I understand what you're saying, but, you know, if they're, that's the idea of doing these workshops, is there's a I'm fine saying we'll leave that in for right now, number one oh-six, one fifty-five. For pre-K, we'll leave in to evaluate, continue to evaluate. Uh and see if that hard number comes out to.
Is a good answer.
Just another piece of information, the birth rate um in two thousand seventeen, which is the class that will come in and fall is down substantially in Andover. So uh twenty students, twenty kids.
Which one is this? Sorry.
The seventeen, uh sixteen, six, two thousand sixteen births, and Andover was thirty.
Twenty-seventeen, so we're entering.
Yeah. Yeah.
The seventeen was twenty.
Okay.
And the eighteen was twenty-one.
Oh.
So we have fewer students potentially.
So how many families do you still need to contact?
Uh, there's, um, at least a dozen.
Potential?
Well, the eighteen confirmed, that covers us also though for our smart, smart survey.
Well, that's correct, assuming that.
They meet the requirements for the smart survey.
Correct, and and that is a big factor in terms of whether we could maintain the grant funding at its current level.
So Shannon, are we deciding to pass forward to them, are we taking that out for now?
Yeah, I just want to take it out, so I think we need to.
Take it out?
Yeah, take it, we'll take it out.
I just want to make, I make sure.
Well, we're not, so I I want to be clear, we're not doing anything by motion right now.
No, no, this is just so high, I'm.
Right, we're, I'm just saying, as far as moving conceptually, and that's what we're doing.
Right. No, I just. I just want to, I just want to make sure what I'm, what I'm making notes on is correct, that's all, that's that, that's all.
Yeah. Right. So that means we have to come up with a hundred and six, one fifty-five, somewhere else in the budget to potentially cut.
To get back down to that.
To get back to four hundred thousand, to get back to a zero budget.
We just. Try to work numbers on it.
Yep. I I am having issues with the buses and would like input on that, so to go like next line item, um just would appreciate knowing.
Number, or just time?
Number.
Um, well, again, um Deco has given us um information that we're certainly going to be um well under an hour's time. So as John said, it's, it looks like it's difficult.
So there's an official, 'cause I thought I had heard before there was an official, and then there was somebody here unofficially from Deco saying.
I don't think they have acted, yeah, yeah, but it's just very early.
Right.
Just.
But it looks, yeah, we look into.
But it looks, yeah, we look into it, but it appears that, I don't know, we will be a lot. So I think we keep it out maybe till the next week and discuss it further.
Well, once we've got that information, but we're just not adding that into the budget, if that's fine. Sure.
We've always come across with zero percent increase or two percent decrease. And on top of that, we've returned money to the town every single year. And it's the green sheet of paper lesson with your orange. And this is one town. We're all working for the coming good. We're looking out for our pockets as well as our children. We're looking out for our roads and our bridges. I mean, we have a lot to consider. But I think that when we're looking at our budget, let's keep in mind what we've done for the past four years. And how we've reduced it and how we've given money back to the town. And I think that now we should keep the kids in mind as our first priority. Laura, you've done a great job in pulling numbers from, I don't know where. But it must be the numbers god someplace in the universe. And everything everybody's asked for, you've given us. We're looking into combining services with, sharing services with the town and potential savings. We have a lot of areas we've identified for potential savings. I don't think we should balance the budget on the backs of the kids or the teachers. I think that we should look to the places we can save and save the money in most places that doesn't impact the quality of the education that makes this a school of distinction. Our schools, our students have done very well over the years I've been here. And I'm proud to say I'm from Andover. And I think that the best thing we can do is to provide, if we can provide a zero percent increase and then we turn around and, and in June end up giving money back, not June of this year, but June of the budget year. I mean, what more can you ask for? I don't know what the residents of the town would want. And I hope that they let us know.
Well, I think the board of selectmen was representing the town as far as trying to quote-unquote let us know. Um, as far as what they were hearing from the constituents in the town. That's as I've understood it. So coming in with the zero budget is not what they would like us to do, but it's certainly what we have done, and in fact, we've reduced by one to two percent. Um, so I think depending on what we're seeing as far as student enrollment for next year is really gonna define whether we're gonna come in with a zero budget increase or whether we're able to look at a decrease.
What is the what, what's the potential outcome from the board of finance when they get a budget? Is there a chance that they can say that they're not going to accept it?
Mm-hmm.
And so what, just so, I fully understand, what does that look like if they say, we come in with a zero increase and they say, we don't accept?
Then it gets sent back to us for reconsideration, but there's all these different votes that would have to happen. So it's not really looked at until it's voted on by the town. And you've seen in the newspaper, when the town rejects a budget, it goes back to the board that promulgated the budget to agree on a different budget and try to finagle the numbers again. What we're trying to do here, as far as my belief, is to avoid that by putting in all this time, so we present a budget that we believe is, is best and that hopefully will be amenable to the town. Laura, do you, did you wanna respond about what happens with the board of finance comes back?
Uh.
I saw your hand go up, I just wondered.
No, my hand didn't.
Okay.
So like.
I, I know your hand went up, Dan, I just thought I saw some people.
So, mine went up, so, so two things, as soon as I'm done with this, I think our town manager has something that he wanted to say, but, um, real quick before that.
Maybe that was the answer.
With, with the, with the, um, pre-K numbers, you said that that was in town, how many out of town for next year?
Um, there are right now, there are four families that are interested from out of town.
That are currently enrolled?
Only one is currently enrolled.
One's currently enrolled, and four additional are interested.
Three additions.
Three additions.
So the, the one that's currently enrolled was counted in the eighteen.
They were not counted in here, they are.
So nineteen.
With the possibility of another four.
So let's get it down, eighteen Andover families currently into pre-K.
And.
One out of town.
One out of town, which we are assuming that if they were given the opportunity to continue, they would, we have not had a conversation with them. Um, because they're out, they would be eligible for another year of pre-K, so we're assuming that they would, but as a town and as a board, you know, we might have to make some difficult decisions.
Well, just having spoken with the Hebron Chair of the Board of Education, they have a significant waitlist going into their pre-K. Um, so we're lucky in that we've been able to accommodate and not had to come up with a waitlist, but certainly talking with them about whether Hebron wants to send their children to Andover for pre-K.
That was a time when we had a waitlist.
So it is their, how's their advertising, is, is there a way to reach out to those people on that waitlist?
Well, we gotta make sure we can handle all our people first, and we, you know, we, we have opened it up to out-of-town residents right now. Um, we have six, seven out-of-town residents out of the forty-six students. And by the way, we are expecting a forty-seventh, uh, in April.
A part of that also, with our grant.
families.
Part of that also.
Helped us meet the grant requirement.
Help that be the grant requirement.
Exactly.
That forty-seventh is, we're in, in town, is that right?
The, a forty-seventh preschooler will be starting in April.
John, can I just add one thing?
Yes.
We always have to assure that we have a space available, should there be a child coming through birth to three identified as eligible for special education.
Thank you, yes. Um, also, something I think the, the school readiness committee just voted on, the tuition.
Yes, so the school readiness council met last week and they're raising the monthly and annual tuition, uh, from four hundred dollars a month to six hundred dollars a month. And so families, uh, would pay ten months, they'd pay four thousand. So anyone that's at the top of the scale would be paying six thousand, so it's a two thousand dollar increase per family.
And that would only affect that top, or the, the top income earners, right? That, that wouldn't affect any, anyone else down below that.
Anyone who is at the seventy-five percent median family income for their size of family, according to the state slide, this deal guidelines and chart, they would pay a significantly lower monthly rate. Anybody above the seventy-five percent would pay the six hundred a month.
I don't know if I've ever looked at trying to somebody to watch a pre-K kid. Still idiot.
And we compared that with other towns.
We did, and, uh, and Hebron, which Shannon just referenced, uh, their rate, uh, is six hundred a month as well.
I was beginning to wonder.
Laura, is he down there, is he listening?
Yeah, I did, Eric, did it.
Yeah, sorry, Eric.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to say one thing, cause my understanding of the charter, what the charter says is once the board of finance has their official budget meeting, which has to take place at least two weeks before the annual town budget meeting, after that meeting, they can do, they can't cut individual line items in your budget, but they could do, uh, an overall reduction if they so chose. Not saying they would, I'm just saying that that's within their, their power.
That's in the purview of the board of finance to do.
Correct.
So it's not coming back to us.
Uh, well, presumably would, they would,
That would be up to, yeah, sorry.
I mean, they, they can't tell you individual, they could give you a, a lump sum reduction
Mm-hmm.
and then it would be back to you to figure out how to adjust your budget to meet that.
Right.
If they did that, not saying they will.
Okay.
That's the procedure.
Thank you for the question. Keep going, down the page.
So all these are for existing classrooms that is that correct, underneath the running room?
Yes.
Everything is for existing?
Uh, how about, how about the East Con support, not the support?
I mean, I'd still think that we, personally, I think it's.
We, ah, I'm sorry, that is stuff that we'll still, yeah.
I think we can do better than that as well, because we're still forty-seven thousand for one day of service. I'm pretty good with computers, I'll play.
You're hired.
So we're not, so.
Um, we're the other thing in the field trips though, so if that's that isn't cutting field trips, that's merely saying that we're gonna request parents to.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
Let's just get a name.
So just to be clear, everything below here. We're not gonna, we're not gonna look at.
No, we don't touch it. No, no, we have. They're primed to hear about these two, the last two items.
Right.
Most of them.
Yep.
So you're, you want to incorporate the IT at ten possibly more?
Yes, yes, minimum of ten.
So we're not looking at reducing.
Again, I mean, and we need to, and I don't know, I mean, the discussion has to happen at some point, but, and I don't know if that's now, but to discuss the makeup of the administration and what we want it to look like, because we need to make that decision very soon. Um, and as I mentioned, kind of my, I understood uh, in my absence, kind of three, three possible options we're up for the superintendent. Sally going to.
Those are your options, cause you just announced it in our last meeting, so.
John wasn't here, but, so, Sally's in Boca, you know, and we gotta figure out what to do. We're, Boca, I don't think so. We're gonna be, uh, it's either gonna be contracting out with another entity, district, somebody else. Continuing the way that we currently are, or some modification of that. Or there was talk about the principal superintendent.
Come on, go.
Uh, with that, I kind of, I've already mentioned why the, the last one didn't make any kind of sense. Um, with combining the principal superintendent, when we've already eliminated administrator and put more on to the principal's plate, now we're gonna give even more.
Well, I think that, that goes to what Dan was saying just now, which is reconfiguration potentially, and looking at all of it to say, if we combine the superintendent and principal role, what would the principal's part of that be versus what would the superintendent part of that be? Um, and I think that's what we need guidance from Sally and John to say, Sally, this has been my responsibilities for my two point five days. Um, certainly, we could not merge them without taking a lot off the plate, and so we need to figure out um, what's, what's important for the Andover.
And the additional roles that he's picked up since losing, so
Correct.
I would imagine if you're gonna take on superintendent, you can also take on pre-K director.
Correct.
So.
So I think that's what we need to figure out, what we're hiring for if, for the superintendent. And if we're merging, what then becomes a superintendent slash principal role versus who else might we wanna hire?
And if there's any money is being saved with bringing back in stuff that's been outsourced.
Correct.
Other options, who is it you can hire in? Watch time.
The interesting thing is that, not to put John in the spotlight here, but if John entered into a program, um, there is a one-year program that allows him to get certification to be the superintendent, where he can during that time serve as an interim superintendent. Um, and maybe that would be, to be very instructive to us, for John to be able to come back and say, um, I'm not gonna say you're pulling your hair out, cause that would be pejorative at this point, um, but, yeah, I know, I see that.
I already did that.
Um, but to say, this is what I'm seeing as far as my recommendations of what Andover elementary school might wanna look at. So here's what I see superintendent-wise, and here's what I see principal-wise, and here's what we need. So there's always the option, as Jerry just said, to do something on an interim basis while we make these considerations. And also have educated input at that point as far as what the jobs entail. But until that point, I think we need Sally's job responsibilities, which we have, John's job responsibilities, which we haven't, have extended that, and then what we're looking for.
So is this something that maybe is, uh, on the next regular board meeting, a discussion?
Absolutely.
To discuss the makeup of the administration.
Absolutely.
So at that point, I don't feel like those two line items in this reduction makes sense to look at, because we don't know what either position looks like.
Not at all. Correct.
Plus thirty. Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Still hope to see one of those, one of the hours we're seeing somehow.
No, the handhouse.
As far as the, the top one, would it eliminate the full-time parent? Um, where that, what was that added in this year? Or what did you?
It would be eliminating your position.
Right, I understand that, it was, was it, was that salary based on either they will be put into second or fifth grade?
It's, um, so the two new parents that we hired this year go away in this budget. And this would be, this would be cutting, the, the two new parents we added this year go away because we added two new classrooms.
They're the top.
Yeah, but we're eliminated, we're taking those out.
Those are out already.
Right, right.
Um, because we added two new classrooms, so we wouldn't need parent support, cause the class sizes come down.
Right.
So the forty-three that you're looking at is a current person that would be.
Okay, that's what I wanted to understand, but that's.
So it has nothing to do with the two that we hired?
No, 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 I'm, okay.
Or added to classrooms.
So that's a current, not what we added to the second or fifth grade?
Correct.
Thank you, okay.
So the ones that we added this year have been taken out of budget?
Yes, because we added two classrooms. We added two parents this year to help with the class size. And then the recommendation was to add two new teachers to reduce the class size, so if we did that, we'd have any of those.
So when we're doing this reduction, if we eliminate those two classrooms, to go back to at least what we're at currently, we would have to have the two parents back in.
This budget did not have them back.
But to, to go on staffing levels today, we would have to have the two parents back in.
You would have to add, if you need.
That's cool.
So this budget, if, if you take out those two new classrooms, you're back to bigger class size with no support.
I thought that new classrooms was, was padding for potential growth in those two classes that we're gonna.
Yeah.
Be, because you.
He's right.
We're at fourteen right now.
Yeah.
We're at fourteen on classes, but everything's split and all of that done, so parents that we that we currently have should be left to be.
The parents that we added weren't in the budget to begin, in this year's budget, weren't in there to be given.
But what I'm saying is, is they had nothing to do, they had nothing to do with the eliminate two new, the two new, the two new, two.
All I'm saying is I didn't carry them forward.
Grow the new budget with the two extra classes, because you added the extra class, if you don't need parents.
Right.
You're. You're right.
Right.
What you're saying is correct.
Right.
That if you keep the number of classrooms exactly where they are right now.
Right.
Those two parents that were hired this year in January to serve until the end of the year in those classrooms.
Right.
Provide additional classroom support, in this new budget, they go away. In the budget you have in front of you right now, they're not included in that budget. So, two things are being said, but to put the pieces together, those are the pieces.
Right.
And if you look down on the projected, on this, Dan. You'll see how it's projected in terms of number of classes and. How it's set up. So for example. Grade two that has a parent right now. In their classroom. Would be going up to grade three. The way this is drawn, it's drawn with two grade three classes. The way this is drawn.
Okay, so it would in effect. It would affect the benefit that we were trying to give these kids. Oh.
Well, you have to look closely at this, because the way this is laid out. Okay, this is where it gets. Three, four, six, eight, ten.
This is page three?
No.
Was it actually the orange?
What page is this?
Page last night. This was just getting.
This was in your packet from the last meeting.
It's thirteen.
It was, so you had the pink, then you had the yellow, then you had this.
I, I.
Yeah.
I'll find it after, I'm not gonna dig through like. So the pairs right now are in grades.
Two and five.
And five.
Is this current? Oh, it's, it's in the pre-k.
And then where's that second parent, I'm sorry?
Grades, it's in five.
And then, and then five, so.
But we had a proposal for what to do with grade six.
The teacher rating, but let's take one parish, so. So let me just. To maintain. What we currently have, is it. Is it able to say that we'd be looking at needing them to turn around and add additional eighty-seven, three sixty-six? Doubling that, when you eliminate a full-time parent, we essentially need to add two.
Well, where are you adding them?
Well, the question is, because we added in mid-year to the second grade and.
Oh, so you're doubling that amount?
So.
Second grade and fourth grade, we added a parent.
So we talked, so we talked about, um, kinda on a different. Way out, is if we needed to add pairs, we could probably do it on a half day. Because the later part of the day tends to be mostly specials. We don't necessarily need parent on a half day, so the price comes down significantly if you add a half-day parent.
Because you have.
From morning to lunch.
Right, so you have essentially eight-thirty in the morning till twelve o'clock of instructional time uninterrupted. And then between twelve and one, you have lunch and recess, and then you have an afternoon special. Which is forty-five to fifty minutes, and then you have, you'd be left with an hour of instructional time that would not.
Well, it would be, so what do the pairs currently do during those special times?
In the case of the new pairs that we just hired for second and fifth grade, they actually go to the special with the kids. Um, that's not absolutely necessary, but that is how we, that is how we.
That are how we, when they're, they're with that class from.
The whole day.
Morning.
Morning till night.
Morning, go.
Till night.
So if you did that, that number is actually more like twenty-three, I think, sort of.
Per, per.
Sort of half day, because you, there's no bench. There's just not enough hours they're gonna crawl.
So we'd be looking at forty-six. Serving for, so.
Correct.
So where is this full-time parent coming from, is it a little?
It's not, that would require us to.
It was just a, another thing you could look.
Another thing we could look at, so it literally would be, um. Is that way a position we currently have in, in eliminating? That's what I asked, so you're.
So I, I believe what that does is it brings us, not counting pre-K, brings us down to three pairs, which would be assigned for the IEP.
IEPs.
For the IEPs that those special ed kids have to have a parent, so it gives us no classroom support, that's a lot.
And, pardon, not sure if I'm allowed to ask this or not, but, um. Tell me if I can't, but we have a pre-K kid, a pre-K child coming, starting in. A random month, that leads me to believe birth to three, which is that accurate, is that.
Even if a birth to three student comes to us in the, you know, the middle of the year, like now, they don't necessarily require.
One, uh, parent support. But, well, we, so if, but we have the potential of all of a sudden next year, we have anybody else who they need to parent.
That's correct.
We're gonna be up against it with no one.
And just like, exactly, and just like anybody who moves in over the summer, or just like anybody who moves in in the fall, and then when that happens. We deal with that, you know, I mean, like what Laura's trying to propose, and this is certainly, the law's in your court, but what Laura's trying to propose is kinda. How do some of these things get skinny back to, you know.
Yeah, well, there was a being, there were a lot of cuts.
Versus carrying a little extra for the just in cases. And that's, that's that, that tricky little balancing act, really.
I mean, to me, and, you know, I'll refer to the board members here, but it makes, to have pairs only for IEP students doesn't seem like the best interest. For the kids. So I would, I'd say we're gonna.
That's why I, I ask specifically about that, that would be eliminating current position, we don't think we should do that.
I don't think, I agree.
Thanks, I'm believing current parent staffing assets, right?
Correct.
And I think we can. Follow that down to the next line item as well, as far as eliminating two classrooms?
Correct. Two additional classrooms.
Two additional classrooms. Okay, and I'm assuming that adding the half-day parent was in to make up for the pairs.
No, adding that was because if you above it eliminated the two additional classrooms, this would put some parent support into those two classrooms.
Okay, so. You still can't say fifteen one, though?
Well, it's not the same.
It was actually an add-back in to the budget.
Yeah.
That's an add-back, so.
Yeah, yeah, nevermind. Anyway, um. Just, so FTE reduction of four non-closeer teachers, can you just explain that?
So that was looking at, um, our specials going from one point on to a point.
How does that affect, like, this guy, like, how does that work? Um.
It doesn't.
Well, here's how you have to look at it. If there are fourteen, if there are fourteen classrooms in the building.
Yep.
And a special area teacher in the course of a given day can see up to five classes a day. In the course of, you know, you have like five one-hour blocks, if you don't include lunch and recess. Then you can fit in seeing all of the classes that need to be seen in three days. Um, and that's what we're doing right now in art, that's what we're doing right now in. Uh, library essentially, three days. In the case of PE and music, for example. Uh, in those cases, they have additional responsibilities, like the PE teacher also teaches health to all of the kids. The music teacher does all the lessons and the band practices and things like that, musical instruments. So.
And the technology teacher does all IT support.
Exactly. Um, so there are additional responsibilities, well, actually, the technology teacher is also the math specialist, is also a IT support person.
Yeah. Teacher.
So there are a lot.
Perfect, for the state.
And there are a lot of hats. So scheduling wise, to answer your question, it can be done, it can be fit into, uh, four days.
Now, you mentioned a couple of other, but a lot of them are doing other roles, which would, if we would schedule them down, who would pick up those roles if they're currently filling?
Right, absolutely, um, and.
Not gonna do it.
Nope.
How would we do it?
Hey, doesn't make sense to me, because.
And you're very much on it.
Again, I think the next year is, uh. You know, is a different discussion. And then the last year, I think, does anyone have any concerns with? Reducing Eastcon IT support, dropping ten thousand. For, uh, field trips. And asking for parent support in field trips.
Were you gonna bring back fundraising too?
I was gonna say, I can go a lot of funding for seven years, I would have no problem with it.
We could also look into using student activities more in our account.
Actually, what was that?
The student activities.
Yep.
Um, we can look into using that more, that fund more than, um. To pay more costs than what. So we can look into that.
What's the fund being used for, Dan?
Well, it's a variety of things that we had in that account a long, long time ago. When I first started, we, we redid all of that, um, account system.
There were fifteen to twenty accounts.
Yes.
That weren't connected with a class, weren't connected with.
Yeah. Nothing, yeah.
Any, any line item, so we got those, Laura got those down, so that now an account follows a class.
So.
We've organized.
Right, so, like Sally started that account at basically about thirty-five thousand dollars.
What's their amount?
It's about thirty, I believe. And it's because this year we didn't collect from parents, so we're trying to draw that money down to something. Intangible.
So I.
So how it accumulated over time, I can't.
No, I, I guess what I'm saying is, you just said that, Sally just said that, that you're just starting using it for the field trips.
We could, yes.
Right, what I'm saying is, what has it been used for up until this point before?
So it's been used for. The field trips, the board pays for the cost of going to the science center, the cost of going to. Uh, big place, admission price, the, um, student activities has been paying for the bus. The transportation to go there, so we've kind of split the student activity and pace or something, and in the case of, uh, the New York trip and the Boston trip. Costs is empty, um, so whenever there's a bus being run for a trip, I can be paying that student activity. And in the budget, the board's gonna pay for the actual admission.
How is that funded, how was that funded, is that something that we fund, or how is that?
Well, it's that old balance with this new.
You are still, I, so we're still just drawing down thirty-something thousand, okay?
Yes, that, yes.
Grandparents and the kids who went to school around.
Correct.
Watching, okay. So once the Nebraska seniors.
So what can we look at using that?
Keeping that more, which makes sense, so, I think that eighty-four hundred is.
So what that eighty-four hundred does is it gets rid of what is, was the board side.
So the ticket admission prices.
Right, so it's either gonna get paid a hundred percent out of that old balance, or we're gonna start asking parents like we did in the past to pay twenty bucks.
And one thing that I would ask, and I'm not sure how we do this, but some kind of contingency, I mean, we don't wanna, I think, the idea is most parents can have a problem. To make money, but.
We have some emergency funds.
Emergency funds for a child who, whatever reason, they can't financially afford.
Correct.
We, we always provide an exception for everything.
Okay.
And I want, and we still.
School pictures to. And I figured, I just wanted to, if we're gonna reduce it, make sure that was a.
We still do two primary, because we still do the cost of dinner, which goes towards cost of, cost of, and we still do those, then white hole.
Like, oh, very, very cost-effective for making a clean out.
We. Yeah. We're gonna, that's, Mark four, next week, that's right.
That was in the, I have so many of them in the.
Got your.
You have something on us?
No, 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 I, I said, I have a lot of many kids I can move back.
Oh, but where they go, where they are, so many kids, at least, right to where they are.
When the pasta dinner was, and.
Sure you don't recast something you hate the same kid?
So we also got an executive session to deal with tonight, I'm just gonna say, do we wanna, are we okay for now, do we have any more questions for that?
The only thing is to make sure Laura is on board with what we just went through on this list, 'cause.
So, uh, we can, uh, recap. So we are good with the ninety-six.
Yes.
Um. We are good with the reducing Eastcon by ten, and also if we can get that down in Washington.
Go on and go off of this list, Laura, if you would, because it's easy, here we go, okay, so we're good on the.
I am. Okay, go on, I respect.
We're good on the first, we're good on the first two.
Um. Are we good on the second one, I?
Yeah, because our, 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 and that, that line there is the two padded classes, correct?
Yes. Okay.
That was to take us from the fourteen to sixteen, no, we didn't, yes, yeah.
I wasn't sure we came to a consensus on that, okay.
That, that, that keeps us at current status.
That keeps us at fourteen.
This is a concept.
Correct.
Okay, um.
Good on that. Yeah.
Um, we were not good on the pre-K.
For right now, yep.
Correct.
We, uh.
Not good on the buses.
A little soft, okay.
We are just checking in numbers, I'm not, thanks.
So the money involved, that co.
Not yet.
Not yet.
Uh, okay, the buses, yeah, we want more information on the length of time.
Yep.
Um, we are not good with eliminating the full-time parent.
Correct.
Not good with eliminating two more, two classrooms, so we're, and the fifty, those are joint, they are.
Not good on any of them, yeah. The only thing good.
Um, not good with reducing full-time teachers.
So the only thing we were good with on that list was reducing Eastcon, taking a look at that to ten thou, by ten thousand.
Yeah.
And the age one hundred on the field trips.
And then I'm adding thirty thousand per year.
Well, yes, as a, D does.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I'm another reduction, I'm putting in thirty thousand per year.
Yeah, wait a minute.
Hold on, you're reducing, you're adding.
I.
It's a, it's a.
In the top item, that's gonna be another thirty thousand. It's gonna be a reduction of, yeah.
So I thought.
It's adding.
Adding, it was like, wait a minute, I thought, so.
It's adding into the list of reductions.
Minus thirty thousand for heating oil.
Is there still anything in next year's budget for anything with his locker rooms?
No.
No.
No, I'll look back after we have our shared services. We talked on, on Tuesday, John, at the shared services about looking to the town for anything that would involve upgrading or renovating the locker rooms in that. That's a requirement that we were seeing us as having made because we're an emergency shelter.
Yeah. And, and to that point, when I did reach out to Paula afterwards, she was looking for grants, I thought that might be actually a point.
Yes. That'd be great, what I, what I told Paula just following on Tuesday is, it didn't say that I didn't want, sorry, not to look at it, what I said was, I'd like to see our current list of grants.
Yeah.
To give us brainstorming ideas for where grant money is.
But I just thought about, when we were talking about the lockers, it's a, they're between a FEMA and a PE, there's a.
Great. Oh, Homeland Security and.
Homeland Security, that might be something that.
Absolutely.
Take that cost.
Was there anything in that budget that was not repetitive year after year that we could use the. Was there anything in that budget that was not repetitive year after year that we could use the CIP fund that we have to to take care of?
Six thousand. You mean a hundred and eighty-nine that we have, yes.
Yeah, correct.
So my understanding was that we were trying not to touch that, in that we removed the ninety-six thousand for contingencies.
Right.
And that was with the um
Okay. Fair enough.
The help that if we need contingency money, we have a hundred and eighty-nine.
Right. Okay.
But we did put somebody, we talked last time, into the locker room.
Yes, and we're.
For.
From last year.
Last year approved in that budget previously, so.
Okay, so we're not looking for the sounder beam versus.
But they have it up.
Yet, it's substantial.
In, in this year's one.
So, if my math is right. We have.
Would you like a copy later? I'll do it too and I'll check you on that.
I have three hundred and two, five forty-eight.
Yep.
Yep.
How many?
If you're keeping score at home.
That we have from the proposed budget of four million three, we have just reduced it by three hundred and two thousand five forty-eight.
Would you raise that down?
So we do something.
Three oh two.
Yeah, five forty-eight, yes, ma'am, you're great.
Four eight.
Yes.
Beautiful. So now we just need a hundred, another five hundred thousand and we're set, right?
How far?
Okay, okay, I didn't hear, I just wanted to put reality back in play.
I, I, anybody have, what was our number last year? Like, how far is that? What, that three oh five forty-eight, how far away are we from zero?
We're a hundred thousand away from zero. I believe, correct?
Well, this is not.
So we needed to get to zero, we needed to eliminate three hundred and twenty-six thousand.
Twenty-four thousand. So twenty-four thousand is zero. What's, what's the number you're working off of from last year?
Four oh sixty-five.
Yeah, that's.
We proposed, we proposed four three ninety-one for a difference of three points. Yeah. Eighty more. Um. Can I also recap the additional information?
Absolutely.
You want, okay. So you want my contract from two thousand fifteen to now?
Yeah. I, I, I have that.
Yeah, okay, so you don't need that.
It just.
Okay, so there's no other additional information?
Uh, yeah, we have all of the, the job descriptions.
Okay.
Not until we go through all that we received tonight, Laura. And then ask the other hundred and seventeen questions that this brings us to, right?
That's all right, I can, I can at least start on some of this, if I, you know, um, one of the things we danced around a little bit was the insurance. I have it in there at ten percent.
Can you bring it down to nine point five percent for us?
Yep.
Given that that was the insurance consultant's recommendation, see what that does for us, right, Steve?
That makes sense to me, yeah, so hard line item at half a percent.
Okay.
That's a significant one, say, given that that's, I have it, I.
I like to see, yeah, and then to contact that all of the.
Very quickly, I'll just quickly go over the insurance thing. Is it, is what is the expected increase?
So when I was putting the budget together back in November.
Yeah.
Um, the advisor, the broker at the time was at nine and a half percent, I put in ten. They don't settle on that until uh April, May.
Correct.
Then that consortium actually votes. And that, that advice is based on our experience rate, how many planes are coming in versus what is contributed to it. Um, so right now, we're actually looking pretty good, so they have lowered that percentage. And that may be why Ram is using sits, I'm not a hundred percent sure. But it's not, if our experience rate changes, it could go back up, but they, they settle on that in April, May.
April, May.
So it's still a squishy number.
So we could very well be what Ram is and then whatever.
It could be, yes. You know, and I don't, you know, and I'm not gonna speak to Ram, I don't know if it's a straight percentage increase, they're looking at changes in enrollment. I, I don't, I don't.
Just to be clear, when I'm looking at the breakdown, that's medical and dental. So, make sure not to take the entire two hundred object.
Correct.
It's just the line item.
Correct.
Yeah, which is about seven hundred grand. One little more.
It's at eight forty-eight then.
Eight eight. Yeah, it's just for that line item, that was.
Six seventy-five-five, it says in the line two, our two hundred series medical debt for that, goes to six seventy-five-five, and on that line item, it says ten percent increase
Yeah.
on new hires. I'm assuming we're taking from that and not from the bottom line, which sums up the two hundred series.
I'm taking only from the medical.
Okay.
Yes.
Uh-huh.
Yes. So one of, one of the things that actually is not, not significant.
Thirty-four hundred dollars.
So if we do that, which does it from ten percent to nine point five percent, what do we want? No, 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 not much.
It's a half.
Okay, what about women?
I don't, I don't have a.
So, no, 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 we, is it seven, what is it, the ultimate medical dental on the proposed budget?
Six seventy-five-five.
So a half a percent.
He's only like four thousand dollars.
Thirty-four hundred dollars.
Hang on.
No, I, I thought, I thought it was.
But.
Yeah, when you talk to the hundred percent, it sounded like a lot more, but, okay.
Now, if we get down three percent, now we're at twenty thousand. So. Right. And Ram put in for six, but, no, no, I understand, it's a little bit early, so there is a tent hopeful, can be hopeful. Pennies from heaven.
Eighty more. Great, I'm not really, I'm looking at everybody, I've stared at them for a while. Okay, comments from the public on agenda items. Yes.
Kelly, um, Long Hill Road, Kelly. I um just appreciate that you're keeping the kids and their education at the heart of these hard decisions and doing your best to keep teachers. Um, with that being said, I know you have a big decision to make regarding superintendent. And collapsing that position with the building principal, I think is just a bad idea. You're creating a unilateral decision-making body with no checks and balance, and every single building decision will be made by one person. Um, I understand that the board will work in the sounding board and some decision-making, especially financially, but the day-to-day workings of the school will be decisions made by a, a single person. With that being said, if that's the route that you choose to go in, I hope you put some stipulations in, like there must be a leadership team within the building that consists of teachers. And that decisions, big decisions that are being made need to reach a certain uh uh unanimous vote, you know what I'm trying to say, two-thirds of the senate or whatever, the, the cabinet, if you will.
Yep.
But I can't imagine, there's already so little collaboration available for the students because there's only one or two per grade level. There's very little collaboration administrative-wise unless you choose to go outside and collaborate yourself. Same with you and the board, and I appreciate that you've been going to a lot of these meetings and bringing back some of that information. But it just seems like nuts and bolts, you just don't hand power to a single person and say, no, run this. So I just think that that's something to keep in mind. Um, however you proceed, you know, decide to proceed, if it's to get somebody for two point five, if it's to think about shared services. Um, you know, that's up to you, but just I would hope you keep in mind that it's a very powerful decision that you have to make. Um, and with that being said, I appreciate that you're looking into a lot of shared services with the town. I'm just very surprised that our teachers aren't municipal employees. Um, I've never worked for a school where I was paid by the Board of Education, I was, I'm always paid by the town. So I think there's a lot more sharing of services and collaboration that could happen between all of the, the boards in town. I think we're really reaching a precipice with this. So I think it's time to start looking how the town is utilizing staff, how the school is utilizing staff, and how those two things can merge. Because then you're talking about merging insurance issues, um salaries, benefits, pensions, the whole thing. Um. I know it's a long shot, but I'm just, ooh, the thought.
Thank you. Anything else?
Yes. Kristen Soloway, Ten Shack Lillings, um, I, I totally agree with what Kelly said, um, I don't wanna reiterate that. Um, but I appreciate everything you guys have been through tonight. This is not an AB task, I know that. Um, I'm disappointed that, you know, the two additional teachers were cut, I understand. I'm sure it wasn't an AB decision.
They have made it yet, they're just, that's, just we're really.
Just what, what you're, yeah, but that's where you're leaning, I, I understand that.
We're really, yeah.
Um, but I was happy to hear that you're not gonna do anything with um the other teachers, you know, um, technology, you know, library. Um, all of that, because as a fifth grade parent, um, my son participates in Math Enrichment Book Club, they're really important if we're not gonna have two classes. We need to keep those programs and um just to give support to that. Um, as well as, I hope that if the classes, the two teachers are not added, that we do figure out a way to, to get the the kids um used to schedules, getting some movement um between classes or something. So I hope that in that loss and shuffle. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yes.
I, it might be a rumor, but I feel like I heard somebody say that it's.
Oh, yeah, did say your name.
Oh, I'm sorry, Stacy Kluwski, um, how do you wrote?
I'm sorry, I spoke in Stacy. Stacy Kluwski?
Kluwski, it's a tough one, I know, it's a bad committee. K L U C Z W S K I. Mary and. So it might be a rumor, but I think I heard something with the Daco that if we went down to four buses or something with the relationship that they didn't want to do something with four buses, like left them five. I feel like I heard a rumor, just saying, just throwing that out there. My other question is totally unrelated, but what is the sound that is happening? Because it's very distracting. Um, definitely like a more visual learner, which I'm gonna get to a point about that in a second, but um auditory learner as well, and this is very distracting, so I don't know if that can be looked at.
It's never happened before, so I don't know.
Yeah, I wonder the winds, but.
It's a water.
It feels like it's a heating thing.
It's a, it's a. It's an HVAC.
Yeah. If it happens during the school day, imagine, it's very distracting for children.
Yeah.
We'll look at it in the next one.
Yeah, um. Onto the, I'm a visual learner, um, I understand that the information that you have in front of you, um you're only privy to it, I don't know if this is a school, we think about multiple intelligences and things like that, but if we could go, even old school with like a Scantron projector or something, where we could just not hold it, but see the numbers is very helpful. Um. And my last thing is, I know that we said something about the preschool program, as right now, we don't have a lot of students. Again, I don't know if this is appropriate, but I would love to get those families from Andover, just as Jerry said, like, I love Andover, I, I call it the best kept secret. Um, I don't know if it's appropriate for parents or something for us to do, I, I don't know how you kind of, I don't, I'm not a salesperson and I don't wanna like you know, push people into coming to this program, but if it's just, you know, Mr. Variety calling them, but maybe if they hear from a parent with experience or something like that, I don't know if it's appropriate, but I'm just throwing the idea out there, just trying to get this to our kids more, keep up with it.
Yeah.
I would be, I would be, yeah, volunteering to.
Make calls? Okay, great, add her to the list, Laura.
Yes.
A couple of years ago, we developed, um, because we were really trying to sell Andover, we developed a pamphlet to give to realtors.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, to try to encourage more families with kids to move into town, and we've continued to do that.
Okay.
Yeah, but this is, that's beyond that, that would be pre-K's parent to, to a potential pre-K parent.
I see, I see.
Um, your idea, that's great.
I actually have one more thing.
Yes.
Sorry, Kelly again, Long Hill Road, um.
Same road.
Yep, same road. Um, what are the implications of getting out-of-town preschool students to enter our program, and then when they leave? Once kindergarten hits, they go back to their home school. So it feels like it sort of inflates some numbers that we read and it inflates some budget numbers, but then we put these supports in place and then they're gone, so.
No, we don't, no.
No, the person is gone.
Right, but we don't put supports in place
Well, to maintain the class size and to, so I just, I don't know what the implications are moving forward, like how much does that actually cost us? Is it even cost effective?
Anticipating they're gonna come forward. Well, it's cost effective to the extent that we needed some of those families to qualify for the grant money that we got.
Which was the income-related grant money?
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Yes. Okay.
Um, Mary Nella Shofan, um, Kideru.
Can you speak up a little bit, Katie?
Um, Mary Nella Shofan, Kideru, um.
With that, Laura?
I don't.
Okay.
I got it.
John's got it, okay, thank you.
Um. I'm not aware of the grant details. How much money are we talking about? Like, I was looking at the um, the report that was uh shared last month, I believe, and it looked like we were spending uh a hundred and sixteen dollars and twenty-eight cents for uh student allocation for preschoolers versus anywhere between thirty-seven to fifty-six, sixty-six dollars for all the other grades. So, to me, a hundred and sixteen point twenty-eight cents, like a really high uh cost for preschoolers, so what is the grant and how is the grant come into the picture? Because it seems that we're spending a lot of money in preschool with the, I mean, our, versus thirty-seven, fifty-six, sixty-six, you know. I don't know, it's wasn't the sheet called per student allocation?
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Johnny.
Think differences in numbers.
We're not, well.
Sorry.
Well, it's okay.
I mean, in the first five minutes.
No, I, I, I.
We can respond.
That I'm just.
We can respond at the next meeting, we can give a, a little breakdown, or do you wanna?
The last one.
I don't know, maybe it was covered in the, but I, it just, I don't know.
So pre-K, pre-K. I don't know.
Go ahead.
Pre-K does cost more, um, there's a lot more expenses that, for, one of the ones I'm always highlighting are snacks.
The program pays for snacks for kids.
We pay for snacks, we don't do that in any other class.
That's, that's a big one.
Um, and that's about five thousand dollars a year just for snacks.
For students.
No, five thousand divided amongst the forty-five, forty-six kids.
Your whole, your whole pre-K. So that's an additional expense that pre-K has that other classes don't have.
Other classes.
Um. I don't know what else I can talk to, but there's a lot of disposables you go through with pre-K. We have, uh, we go through toothbrushes. There's another one, uh, we don't do tooth brushing in any other grade level than pre-K, we don't, baby wipes, um.
Baby wipes.
I don't think we do diapers, but we have.
And would that cost, uh, be the same if we were to go back to the part-time, um, pre-K, because I think years ago, when my kids were young, it was not a full-time option, it was a part-time.
That's right.
That does cost change?
It's.
They're, they're higher because of the accreditation, I would say that.
Yes.
Yeah.
I mean, we probably weren't doing tooth brushing when we, um, adapted, okay.
That's correct.
Um, so, you know, we are doing more in full-time.
So I would say just, just an interest agreement, I'm sorry, um, is just let's, if we wanna get further into add pre-K discussion that are, we're, on March eleventh, and we already discussed it at our last meeting, if you, if we have minutes from that, um, that you can access online, but. Understand.
Think of numbers, think of different.
Good.
So we're good.
Yes.
One more thing, that's it, and then I swear I really went, so it seems like one.
Same road, that's Kelly.
Kelly, hi, Long Hill Road, still, still there. Um, one thing that seems to be a roadblock is our ability to communicate during these meetings, us as the community with you, the Board of Education. And I understand it's Robert's Rules of Engagement, but I'm wondering if there's some way around that so that we can continue the dialogue and conversation. the dialogue and conversation, not have to continue to reiterate or rehash or get into this back and forth, oh, we're not gonna respond, we are gonna respond, we're not gonna respond, when we like it, we respond, when we don't like it, we should pull the curtain down.
Well, we're not supposed to respond at all.
Right, so what I'm asking.
And I've, I've kind of broached over that and started to respond, and then last time I decided not to respond in the interest of time, so we can, we can do both, it's not a choice of whether I wanna deal with the question or not deal with the question, I'm just, we have an executive session and we dealt with pre-K extensively at our last meeting, so that's why I felt that we didn't need to really delve much more into that.
And I understand where you're coming from with that, but I do have to disagree respectfully that sometimes when the discussion gets a little heated, there is an iron curtain pulled down. And, and at times shuts the community down and leaves a, a distaste in our mouth, saying things like pox on your houses and that you listen to us ad nauseam, so.
Okay. I said pox on your houses, so I'll respond to that one, for not having been present for four and a half years of, and of, of Board of Education meetings, and specifically
And, and that you listen.
to address that we had budget meetings for at least three meetings last year in coming up with the budget for this year, and I remember very specifically saying that because we cannot now redo our budget for this year, so it's great that we have so much interest this year. I don't think other than limiting Paul to comment to three minutes, um, that I put any other limitations on it. My, my response, Kelly, was specifically to, it's very difficult to hear criticism of our budget when nobody was at our budget meetings all last year and we can only deal within the budget for which we budgeted, that was that comment.
Okay, but so I think that the budget workshop seems to be moving things forward in a productive manner, I wonder if there's any other thing that could be like a community workshop, that once you know, every other month or something, that there can be an open dialogue between the community and the Board of Education in a, in a, in a meeting setting, okay?
Anything else? Okay, do I have a motion to do an executive session?
Are we gonna schedule the, 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 discuss this?
That comes up after our executive session, but if you want to talk about it now, I'll just let everybody know and then we can do that.
Um, are, are we recording all of these things, I think, as far as the, the pre-K question goes, um, if we record everything here tonight, then people can go back and and take in our prints.
Importantly, we didn't have somebody taking, um, a video of our last meeting.
How many, just, just, you know, it's, it's.
Grant.
I believe that usually helps us.
Correct. And thank you very much, Laura, for doing it wherever you are.
I'm hiding behind you.